Good afternoon, everyone. It is 12:00 PM. It is Monday, January 24th, and this is the School Board Member Discussion Session, and the District School Board of Indian River County. We are meeting in the Joanne Idlet Junior Teacher Education Center. And at this time, we'd like to open up our session, discussion session, and we have a first agenda item is with Ms. Rosario, Updated Public Records. Ms. Rosario, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Moore, I just wanted to, oh, and board members, of course, I just wanted to bring this item forward after several discussions with Dr. Moore, so that we could look into an electronic process for public records, and a review of what we have in place now. I've talked with Dr. Moore for several months on this, and the district utilizes, and what the process is for what the district utilizes for public records. Many districts do it differently. I don't know if some of you know that. Some districts may use attorneys, some districts use paraprofessionals, some districts use public information officer like we do. Of course, I've talked with our attorney on this matter as well. I also think that for our process here, we have a staff member who logs in all of the requests one by one, issuing request numbers, and verifying each request as they come in. Not to mention the initial email notification that needs to be written, specific to each person's request, and then, of course, each follow-up. So, after talking with Dr. Moore about this, I did a little bit of research. Sometime ago, I requested of Leon County, as an example, a public records request during our attorney interview process, because I knew that they also recently had an attorney interview process. And so I wanted to request, you know, some of the questions and their processes for that process. They actually, and this is how it got me interested in what other school districts were doing. They actually did it through an online portal where you create a username and password, and then you submit your request. That way, you get an automated answer. So I got an automated answer. All of that is included in the backup for you. I got an automated answer that said, "Thank you for your request. This will be processed," you know, and then there was a follow-up, I think about a week or two later on, that said, "This is the cost for it." By that time, we were already in our process, so I didn't need to move forward. And then I realized they were, the interview was actually online. Then, they, after 30 days, there was an automated email that said, "It has been 30 days. Because it has been 30 days, we are now going to close out this request, because it has not been followed up. And this doesn't preclude you from making a further request in the future." So, of course, it got me interested in what that process was, and how it occurred for Leon County, and how it might be that same way in several other districts. So, our staff, just to give you a little bit of backup, our staff has done a good job at managing a very tough reality where people are seeking information to harm others. And many are being accused of not doing things right, because they aren't getting the information that they want. That's a concern for us, in addition to the volume of public records requests that our office receives. It is impacting the effectiveness of operations of the district, and we really should explore opportunities to digitize the process. And so that's what this item is really all about. It really can help. It cannot hurt. It can't hinder. It can help with the efficacy. It can help with faster turnaround for our community members. It can help with requests, you know, for automated requests, can sometimes be redirected through these online software systems, immediately go to a particular department rather than actually everything filtering through one person. So, there are several things that I have given you as backup, just so that you all could do your own homework. One of the things is our internal procedures, as you see it there. But I just wanted to take your, pull your attention, which I realized today was not in the backup, is that we also have a policy manual for public records that is, not a policy, I'm sorry, the Procedures Administration, or the Procedures Manual, which is PO-8310A in our policies. PO-8310A. It is a detailed description of what our in-house procedures should be, which is different from the policy. 8310A. PO-8310A. We do have a policy, 8310, but that policy, of course, works hand-in-hand with the procedures. So, I wanted to couple the backup internal procedures that was given to you all. In addition to that, there is a Procedures Manual. And so, one of the things that I, I'm going to actually show one video of one of them, if you don't mind, please, just so that you can get an idea of what it is. And then, of course, I'm going to open it up for Dr. Moore to kind of follow up. Thank you. This is from ARC, ARC Case.
On July 4th, 1966, President Lyndon V. Johnson passed into law the Freedom of Information Act as a federal freedom of information law that allows the full and partial disclosure of previously unreleased information and documents controlled by the United States government.
I hereby pass this bill into law.
The Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA, as it's more commonly known, gives you the right to request information from any government agency. It also gives people the right to request information at state agencies as well. Agencies typically provide people with the option of either writing a letter or mailing in a FOIA request, faxing in a FOIA request, or submitting a request via an online form. With ARC Case, those incoming FOIA requests can be reviewed or rejected in an intake queue to verify that the correct information's been submitted. Once all the requestor information has been extracted, the FOIA request package will be routed quickly and efficiently through various processing queues to find and gather the requested information. Within ARC Case, the queue process can be tailored specific to each agency's review and approval process. For example, if a legal review is needed, a legal review queue could be inserted prior to the delivery process. In addition, within a review queue, confidential information can be collected, then redacted or blacked out with configured exemption codes when necessary, to ensure that specific information is kept confidential. Monitoring the FOIA process is simple via the ARC Case Dashboard, where you can see a 360-degree view of FOIA requests across all queues, monitor trends, and each user can tailor the dashboard based on his or her role in the process. Once the requested documents are reviewed and approved, then the FOIA request package is declared an official record, bundled up for immediate delivery based on the requestor's preference, and then requested information is securely sent back to the requestor. Want a better way to process FOIA requests? Want to collect and analyze information to achieve continuous improvement? Want to respond more quickly? Welcome to ARC Case. To hear more, contact sales@arcase.com to see a demonstration about how ARC Case can help you manage your FOIA requests more efficiently and effectively.
So, that's just one example of one that I found. Another one is called R Media. But this next video, and of course, you all can do research, I shared, again, all of this with Dr. Moore. This next one is GovQA, from GovQA.com. This is a public portal, and this is the one that Leon County uses. So, I just want to show you this one, because I think this one is a good one.
When citizens, journalists, lawyers, and other governments request documents from you, the countdown begins. Manually tracking complex, voluminous requests to stay compliant is stressful and insecure. Litigation looms. GovQA is the calm in the storm. A public portal simplifies intake with deflection technologies to self-serve. Needs met, request volume goes down. If not, requests enter the admin portal for vetting, duplicate flagging, and automated routing. Templates make communication and estimates easy. With GovQA in the middle, you can gather documents from backend systems with no file size limitations for secure collaboration between anyone inside or outside your organization. When records require review, in-tool redaction hides sensitive data for unbroken audit trails. Respond consistently, releasing packages to the public portal. Get alerts when responses are received and viewed. Reporting for oversight or budgeting is easy, too. Trusted tools and security, proven government expertise, and a platform you won't outgrow. Replace chaotic manual processes for any type of request. Automate with simplified workflow from GovQA. To learn more, visit GovQA.com.
And so, those are just two of many of the online platforms. Statute actually states that we can have an online platform. They call it a electronic software system. But, at this time, I'm just going to, so that's it. That's all I'm asking, is for a review of our processes, and have the superintendent kind of investigate some of the platforms that are out there, what they cost, and would it be a benefit to us. I actually think it would be. I believe the superintendent agrees as well, but I'll just give it over to the superintendent at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario, and also thank you for acknowledging the hard work that this team does in trying to provide the information as requested as quickly and as efficient as possible. This is something, when I first took over as superintendent, that we looked into. Neither of these two systems, that review, the system that we were looking at, the cost-benefit didn't, it just wasn't there. But I haven't looked at these particular ones. Anything that I can do ultimately to protect staff, and how hard they are working to produce documents when it is cost-effective, that's something absolutely that I would want to do. So, this is something, I know in our conversations, we've probably had three or four conversations over the course of probably three or four months regarding this specific issue, and this is a, one of those issues where there are multiple layers. So, I've already charged staff to begin looking to bring back a recommendation, whether it is feasible, or whether this is something that can ultimately protect staff, protect the board, and protect the reputation of the school system and the hard work that we're doing each and every single day. So, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, who would like to ask any questions? Dr. Jones?
Do we have a cost analysis, Dr. Moore, on the ones you have looked at, as far as, you know, I would want to look at costs versus staff time?
Through the chair, though, I don't have the name on the top of my head, the one we were looking at two years ago when I first arrived, but it was still, it was a simple platform where you were entering all of the information and pushing out the information. So, there was a person behind that specific platform. What I can answer at this point is some of this technology that's listed in this item, does it do it? Does it streamline some of the work, some of the redacting that we do, is a monumental chore. So, A, is it, do they do that? Is it 100% accurate? Those are some questions that I would need to have answered, to make a recommendation. At the end of the day, it's not going to remove an individual from overseeing this work, but if it eases that person's quality of life, to be very honest with you, in terms of some of the information that comes at them, and allows us to be more efficient at having some data regarding public records requests and where they're coming from, then that would be the analysis that I would be engaging in.
And you're right. When we get the weekly report of public records requests, we can certainly see that certain ones take a lot of hours from our staff. That's a given. I was the custodian of records at the state level for FHSAA, and there were 800 schools I was dealing with. 90% of them, I could probably do pretty well, as far as not needing an attorney, but the other 10%, sometimes I would have to double-check on that, because sometimes you look at state statute, you might have some changes. But I felt comfortable doing that, and the executive director felt comfortable doing that, because as a former principal, I understand the importance of redaction in all the areas dealing with student redaction, even personnel files, looking at medical issues. So, I would have a real concern giving this to another platform without us double-checking that. Now, again, have you heard from Ms. McMillan, as far as her concerns with this, in hourly work? What does she talk to you about?
Well, it's not a matter of doing that specific work. It's a matter of doing other work. And to be very, quite honest with you, a district this size, the volume of public records in a typical year, I don't think, we have far more. Let's just be honest. We have a lot more than we should. It's not about the business of the board. It's about all kinds of different things. So, is the volume of work appropriate in terms of generic public records requests? Absolutely. But if you look at our strategic plan, and you look at the volume of area around communication and engagement that we have put into that work, that's the body of work not being done. So, there's the concern. Are we meeting the needs that are driven by statute? Absolutely. Are we always meeting the needs of our district's strategic plan? That's the work that gets pushed on the back burner, and that's the work we need to protect.
Okay. Again, I know this is just discussion, but if it's brought up, again, I would want to really look at that cost analysis.
Absolutely. And I agree. And that would be the information I have to come back and say, "Not worth it. Worth it. Protects our employees. Protects our reputa-" I just don't know.
And just one more thing, even in this district, and I saw a couple of records that went out that weren't redacted correctly, and even at the state level, that turns into a whole other ballgame. So, we have to be very careful. Thank you.
Double-check and triple-check.
Dr. Shipp?
Yeah. I'm glad, Mrs. Rosario, to see that you are concerned about cost-effectiveness and efficiency of the public records request process. I think we've recently seen how that's not been honored in a number of cases. And I would say, Dr. Moore, that there's probably four criteria that I would want to know about public records. And the criteria would be, does it make the process harder or easier for staff? Is it more or less secure, as Dr. Jones is referring to? Is it more or less time-consuming, which is, again, part of harder or easier for staff? And is it more or less expensive? And so, I would ask, not only, and I'm sure you know this, I'm publicly stating the obvious, because I'm sure you would do that. But I think that also, then we'll start to beg bigger questions about the public records request process, and how that process is done, how we charge, how we disseminate information. And so, while I agree that we should probably look into processes to do this more efficiently and less costly, I don't know if this is it or not, but I think that's then, once this comes back, is going to beg bigger questions about the PRR process in this district. So...
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll ask some questions. My first four were already answered, so thank you for that. Couple others that I had is, what if there's a concern, like, I have concerns about redacting and personal information, but another concern I have is, you said that they can go directly to a department, so if there's a dead email link in there somewhere, my concern is, what happens then? So, that's something to ask. The other question would be, do board member requests go through this process?
No.
No.
Okay. So, that would be a separate request. Okay. That's all I have.
No, board member requests go through the superintendent for whatever we need.
I know. I'm just saying.
One of the other things that I didn't mention, which was pretty interesting, is that citizens who actually put in a board, a public records request, can actually, with this username and password, at least with this GovQA.com, they can actually sign in and see all of their requests, and view whether their requests have been submitted or not. So, it's easier for individuals to actually follow through on their requests, if there were multiple ones of them, rather than, you know, emailing Sarah, waiting for a response, waiting for a phone call, and so on and so forth. That kind of takes up a lot of time. But in this case, there is a, I suppose, like a file folder for individuals, which I thought was pretty interesting. I like that, and I know that, I'm assuming that many citizens might appreciate that as well. But I didn't mention that earlier, so I'm mentioning it now. But thank you, board members, for supporting this, and thank you, Ms. Shattuck, for your advice, and Dr. Moore, for your support on this as well.
Okay. Mrs. May, I have another comment.
Sure.
It occurs to me that, later on, I think in our agenda today, no, it was on here.
Is it tonight's agenda?
Yeah. Well, the protocols will be approving, we went through protocols, so that might be on for tonight, and we'll be approving protocols. It occurs to me, I don't recall us discussing board, protocols around board member requests for information on this.
We did not.
And I don't want to hold up
Yeah.
the approval of the protocols, but it occurs to me that that's something that we've really overlooked, and that has become a significant issue that we need to address as our own protocol, and how we request and get information, and we make sure that that's appropriate to the district and serves the needs of teachers and students in our district. So, I'm wondering if we want to
We can add it on.
We can add it.
Can we add that to the next discussion, workshop discussion?
Well, yeah, because then, but then we would pull approving protocols from tonight to go back and add this section.
I don't, I think we can approve-
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on. I think we can approve it tonight, and then add that on later.
Can we, and then we can go back and amend it?
Yes.
And then we don't have to bring it back for another approval.
Right.
It's not a policy, so it doesn't have to do the 30-day hearing.
Right.
Yeah. So, you can approve it, add to the next meeting.
Okay. Then, can we add that to our next discussion, to go back and review protocols for board member requests for information?
Yes. And, Ms. Rosario, you want to add something?
Why can't we approve it tonight with the edit? Why can't it-
What edit?
With the addition. Why can't we approve it tonight? We're going to vote on it.
Because we haven't discussed it yet.
Tonight. Pull it for discussion, or it's on the agenda.
Oh, I'd rather prepare more for that.
Me, too.
There's only one line.
No. This is an entire conversation about how board members request and receive information from the district, and how that is effective, efficient, and serves our strategic plan in our district and the work of the district. It's a much bigger conversation.
Do you want to have more than just submitted through the superintendent? You want to have more discussion?
More discussion.
I want to have a discussion among the board, so that we collectively agree on what will be the protocol moving forward for board members to request information for the district when it does not go through, as it does not go through the PRR process.
Right. Okay. So, I'll put it down as a workshop item request.
Thank you.
Okay. And before we move further, I'd just like to say, welcome back to Nancy Esplin.
Woo, woo, woo!
It's wonderful to have Nancy back. She was being very quiet over there, and I totally forgot to do that. And we wanted to recognize Alicia, and is it Ray's?
Ray's.
And Peggy Poiselle for filling in for us, because they did a tremendous job.
Thank you, ladies.
Appreciate that. And I'll say that again tonight, so we appreciate that. All right. The next item we have is a legislative update, and that one is mine. And also, Member Jones would like to add on FSBA update. So, there's not much to update yet. I just wanted to kind of fill you in on what's happening next week. I'm going to be attending FSBA Legislative Weeks Conference up in Tallahassee, on behalf of the board, for us to go up as legislative liaison. And then, in that conference, we get to meet with different legislators about the different education bills that are coming up, and get to have some conversations with them about how we feel about the bills and things like that. So, I'm kind of tracking a lot of the bills that are moving. There are many, many, many education bills this year. I sent you guys, I think, a month ago or so, kind of where we were at that point, and there are more have been added. So, it's tremendous amount of education bills this year. So, I'm looking at the ones that are actually moving, and I'm sure some will move later on. But just to give you an idea, there is one that's moving pretty quickly. It's SB 148, and I know that Rutledge, Sinia, in the report, they also mentioned that. So, you may want to look at that one. That is the Individual Freedom Bill, which is especially related to health education curriculum. So, you want to take a look at that one. The other thing that we're doing is, I am Chair of the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, and last meeting, we developed a proclamation, and we just came out with it last week, so you have a copy of it. And it's on vaping, and I had Kylie Savoy from QuitDoc come and speak. And when she spoke and gave them the data about what's happening with our kids in our schools, and what's happening with the vaping that's going on, and how many people are selling it, and what happened when one of the bills overturned some of the local government control last year, their jaws dropped. And so, all the city and county councilmen that attend this meeting asked to have us make this proclamation. So, you have it, and they're all taking it, they've been taking it to Tallahassee the last two weeks, so I get to take it next week. I wanted you to know, so that you understand that this is going on behalf of the board as well. But basically, what happened last year is, with the home rule, it overturned the ability for counties to have ordinances. And one of the ordinances we had in Indian River County was on vaping, that if somebody was selling vaping materials, that they had to have students or kids show ID to prove they were 18, and they had to sell them behind a protected area, like they do cigarettes. So, the ordinance said that they had to treat them like cigarettes. Well, once this bill passed last year in Tallahassee, it allowed businesses to sue counties for making ordinances that were stricter than other bills. So, they had to repeal it, which means that now we have 300 vaping areas that are selling vapes and vape materials in Indian River County. And they're allowing to put them out on shelves now, next to toys and bubble gum, and sell them in colored packages. So, it has been one of my personal missions to go and speak to our legislators about that specifically. So, this proclamation is going to be hand-in-hand with what happened with that bill. Yes?
Yeah. I have a question. I thought, and I just looked it up, the legal age to buy a vape is 21, not 18.
Yeah.
So, isn't it, shouldn't it be requiring ID if you're under 21?
It was, but there was some talk about it going back to 18 at the state level. So, again, I don't know where it is at the state. Are you looking at the state level right now?
Frankly, I just Googled age to buy vapes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was really simple.
And that's what I'm talking about, is there is a question as to whether or not it's 18 or 21. It's being sold out on, well, think about it. It's a problem in our schools.
Yes, it is.
So, if it's a problem in our schools, are all those kids 21-years-old in our schools?
And little-known fact, so, yes, it is, Florida State Statute is 21. Little-known fact, it is all, well, probably not that little-known, it is not that hard to get fake ID. Kids get it really easily, and it looks astoundingly legit.
And it's interesting, because I have spoken to our sheriff about this, and it used to be that they could send in kids, underage kids, and, you know, do a trapping-type thing. They can't anymore.
I'm sorry, say that again?
They can't do that.
They can't do, they can't-
They can't send in an underage child and try to catch somebody selling underage, because it's not a local ordinance anymore. It is a state law. Well, it's a state law, so you have to get the state feds, and the feds to come in, to deal with that. You can't have local law enforcement do it. Yeah. I talked to them about that. So, it's quite interesting how laws work, and when they repeal things like that. I don't think they realized what it was going to do to this.
Another question, again, because I'm not, other than what most people know, probably more than most, but less than some. This may be a dumb question, but similar to, you know, there's drug-sniffing dogs. Can, is there such a thing as, like, dogs sniffing vapes, or is there other, I'm going to get in trouble for this, probably, but are there other ways of, I mean, and my point is, I'm not suggesting that we have dogs go into high schools for this, but the preponderance of it in high schools, selling it, buying it, using it, hiding it, it's undetectable.
It is.
And kids are smarter than we are about this, frankly. They know how to navigate these systems, because they're in them every day. They know where the cameras are and aren't in schools, like all of this. So, I'm wondering how we dig deeper in that.
Right. I remember bringing up last year, the vaping censors that I talked about, but you put them in the bathrooms, and they did that in Detroit, and the kids destroyed them in two days. And they were worth, you know, a lot of money. So, what is the answer? I think one of the answers is attacking it from both ways. One is education, educating people how dangerous it is, because even when the Channel 5 News did that news report last week that I was on, there was somebody that responded to it and said, "Oh, you're so wrong. Vaping isn't bad at all." And I'm like, "Okay." Obviously, we need to educate people and do a better job of that. But the other thing is, because when Kylie tells you the statistics and what it does to the body, it's just, it's amazing. Plus, kids can put marijuana into it. So, there you go. You got that other little extra added benefit to it. Other than education, we can see if we can get the ordinances back, the county ordinances, because when we did that, we didn't have as many people selling it, and we didn't have it out on the counters next to toys and colorful bubble gum. It was back behind, protected, and they had to show ID. So, I think, you know, I'm supporting our local government in that they want the- So I think, you know, I'm, I'm supporting our local government in that they want this ordinance back.
Yep.
And I would think my fellow board members would want that as well. So that's what I'm going to go to Tallahassee and say. Okay?
I think the other bill that are dealing with education.
Yes.
But there are two in particular, 1834 and 1557.
Yes, the ones that are on our legislative platform, I have that ready to go. Been talking to Nancy about getting copies for that.
I don't know if these are specifically on our, on our platform.
Which ones are you talking about?
1834-
I don't have them memorized.
1557. They are specific to school districts adopting procedures to comport with certain laws. And they really deal with parental rights, of course, and support school districts creating policies and procedures for notifying parents of certain things. Both of them are related, if you go into-
Mrs. Rosario, he's asking that you speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. Both of them are related, if you go into, take a look at them, you'll see 1557, 1834. I don't know where they are in the process right now, but they're both-
18 what?
They both kind of talk about the same thing, 1834 and 1557.
Okay, I'll look at those. As a liaison, I go up with the understanding that we've all agreed to what's on the platform.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what I bring to our legislators, what's on the platform. But this vaping one hit home recently, looking at our data, so that's why I called attention to that one. But there are hundreds of bills right now in education, that's why I don't have them all memorized. Any others that somebody wants to bring to light?
Just to follow up, Ms. Berenborg. Being a member of the FSBA legislative platform, we're kind of working together, we're having weekly meetings at this point, just on what is relevant to our platforms. And we have mental health, accountability system of Florida, the financial support, highly skilled diverse workforce, and hiring the most qualified students, I'm sorry, hiring the most qualified teachers for our students. So we're kind of keeping that narrow. And what they're going to do, Chairman Berenborg, is get some talking points for these platforms, and then send them to those who are registered for the day in the legislature. And I had the privilege of working on the mental health component along with Dr. Jacobs and Ms. Dampier, and we had just received information on that at our last discussion, so that was good. One other thing that they're talking about, and I agree with you, Ms. Berenborg, on the vaping, I had the honor of going to the Freshman Learning Center one day when we were, when parents were picking up students, and we were talking about that. But it's information, I agree, we, we have to have local control, not only with that, but also with our school board and looking what's best for our county and our students. The one thing that they were talking about, a little bit of the advocacy action bills, school concurrences, removing district-wide language out of that bill, the assessment, there's no update, school safety right now, there's no update, teacher salaries, no update. They did talk about education certification pathways for veterans, and that's being talked about right now. Again, still in the beginning stages. The K-12 education bill, House Bill 1467, that's where it strips the statutory requirement of school board salary to new school board members. Also implements a review system of all instructional materials in media centers, libraries, and classroom libraries, so that's something we have to, you know, really take a look at. And then our funding update, and this surprised me a little bit, FTE numbers from October were presented to the House, and actual number of students was higher than projected, so that helps us, you know, and so forth. But these talking points will be, we have another meeting on Friday, so they will probably be sent to you, Ms. Berenborg, if you're registered.
I am.
Just to talk on those five components, and I know you just have a certain amount of time, but those are the things that we are aligning to right now, so that is my update.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other thing I forgot to mention is that education budget is always an ever-changing thing that happens up there. I know that they're trying to align it with the governor's plan for the education budget, so there have been some items that have been removed and some other items that have been added. I think, again, Rutledge, Sinia referenced that in their report, so you may want to look at that.
One other thing, Ms. Berenborg, and I emailed our attorney and Dr. Moore, once bills become law, I would like to know where is it that it says that the superintendent or school board can be sued? I just want to have that information when those bills become law, so we are aware of that when it does happen, so.
You get, you get told as a board member.
Okay.
Okay.
But I want to see-
Believe me, we're told.
-bill into law, and I want, and that's what they said, just said, just be aware of those things, because there are a few like that.
Yes.
Yeah, I know we get, we get updates from FSBA, we get updates from Rutledge, Sinia, we get updates from coalitions that we're a member of. I'm going to ask, you as legislative liaison, and you as FSBA legislative liaison, that we actually make sure that that's, that's specifically on our agenda for the next couple of months?
Sure.
So that we can track where all these are. There are so many highly significant education bills. I personally would like to be aware of where they are at pretty much any given moment.
Kind of like I did two years ago, where I brought up the different bills, which one was moving?
Yes, I think that would be helpful, and I think it would be helpful for us to make sure we have a section for that at each of our meetings.
Sure.
And obviously, in between, you can send out information to all of us, but I think it's important, not just that we discuss it here at our meetings, but also that it be publicly shared.
Yeah, I think, you know, after FSBA week, I'll obviously have some more things to share. Okay, great, thank you. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Are we good there? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the first item on the agenda is a ELL update, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Meyer to set that up. Thank you, Dr. Moore. In preparation for this, as with many other things in the Office of CNI, we support our students through collaborative efforts, so I asked Ms. Karen Mallett, our Director of Federal Programs, and Dr. Colleen Lord, our Director of Educated Quality, to collaborate on this presentation to give us an overview of the services and supports given to our ESOL students. And Ms. Mallett, the floor is yours, thank you.
Good afternoon. On the top. Good afternoon, I should have known that, I was just here a little while ago, so thank you for having me back. I'm Karen Mallett, the Director of Federal Programs, and today we're going to speak a little bit about our ESOL program here in the district. The first slide talks about, has our vision statement on there, and that is extremely important, because that's what ESOL is about. It's about ensuring that we are transforming education to inspire and empower all students to maximize their full potential. And so really, when we look at the goal of the ESOL program, the goal is to ensure that we are increasing a child's English language proficiency in all language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, so that they can reach their full potential, and that they're receiving instruction that is aligned to state standards, comprehensible to the level of their proficiency, equal and comparable in amount, sequence, quality, and scope as their non-ELL peers. The Florida Consent Decree really serves as our framework for how we make that happen in the district, and that framework covers several areas, six specific areas, one of which, and we'll go over those to some degree today, identification and assessment, equal access to educational programming, basic programming, and others, programming as needed, monitoring of our ELLs, and ensuring that we have teacher preparation and training as well, which Dr. Lord will, will speak to. And so, the state board rule that's identified here on the right-hand side of the slide talks about our district ELL plan. By rule, we have a three-year plan. The current plan that we have does expire this year on June 30th, and that plan really outlines the procedures and methodologies, most of which are strongly, actually, all of which are strongly embedded in law of what we have to do to support our ELLs. In the, over the next month or so, I believe next month, we will be presenting the 2225 ELL plan to the board for approval, and that plan is submitted on the template that is codified in that state board rule. And so we're looking forward to sharing that with you soon. So who is an ELL student? An ELL student, or what we call an ELL, or sometimes you will hear Limited English Proficient, you might use the acronym EL, English Learner, is a student who was not born in the United States and whose native language is other than English, or was born in the US, but comes from a home in which language is, other than English, is most relied upon for communication. Just like national trends, most of our English language learners in the district are born right here, in the United States, or is an American Indian or Alaskan native, and most importantly, who as a result of above, have a sufficient difficulty in speaking, reading, writing, or understanding English language. Because we have many students, of course, who are bilingual, who don't need ESOL supports. And we're going to get to how do we identify who is an ELL in our student. So we talk about sometimes what guides our work, and of course, the strategic plan guides our work, the, the mission of the district guides our work, but some essential understandings also have to guide work. And one of those essential understanding is, we are all academic English language learners throughout our lifetime. I'm constantly learning academic English on a daily basis, continual learners. And so sometimes what helps me remember that is, and it's the strategies, images or visuals. And so you'll see that image in the right-hand corner of a orange blossom. And so for most of us, it's a very familiar image, because we have something connected to here in Indian River County. And so from a social standpoint, if I was speaking socially, and having that background knowledge, I might say something like, "I really miss the fragrance of those orange blossoms during the season, I really do." But if I was in one of those core content classes, and so you see the stats of the books in the background, if I'm sitting in a science class, I might have to talk about the classification of the orange tree. If I was sitting in a social studies class, the economic impact of the industry on our local community. If I was sitting in mathematics class, perhaps the symmetry of the orange blossoms, et cetera. So it's much different, and it doesn't mean that I might potentially be able to do that without instruction. So we often say academic language is taught, it is not caught, we teach it. And so we believe that we are all academic English language educators. Every teacher in our district, we are teaching academic English at all times for all learners, ELL and non-ELLs. And so we focus on what learners can do. Even our students with very limited English proficiency, they can do something in the classroom at all levels, and at all grade levels. We recognize that our students do come from diverse linguistic, cultural, and experiential backgrounds. That makes a difference on how we all learn. And we recognize that our, that we have to build on these assets, and they actually contribute to the environment as a whole, to maximize that potential, again, tied back to our district vision and mission statements. So how does it work? How, what does that look like? It starts with a home language survey. And so, embedded in our district enrollment form, the online enrollment that we now have over the last year and a half, and we have paper-based as needed, our families, all of our families, answer a three-item survey about language. What's the first language in the home? Are there other languages spoken? And they, if anyone answers a yes to any one of those items, our amazing ESOL team, many of which are back here and joining us today, they administer an assessment for, to that child, based on the criteria that's identified in our student progression plan and our district ELL plan. If the students meet the cutoff criteria to determine that they need ESOL services, then ELL plan is administered on an annual basis, as long, along with all the other state assessments. There is no categorical exemption. They do take a language proficiency assessment as well, known as access for ELLs, and as a matter of fact, the window on that opens up today. And ultimately, the goal is that they exit the ESOL program, that they have, that we have given them enough supports to, where they, they do not need to be actively enrolled in the ESOL program. Throughout that, with their ongoing supports and evaluations for our ELLs, really, the multi-tiered systems of support framework to determine what other needs, chaired interventions are needed, family engagement strategies, strategies and accommodations in the classroom, and specific ELL committees that involve parents, students, school administrators, counselors, of course, our ESOL programmatic staff, to support the needs of each individual student. So who are the ELLs in our district? Of course, this is point in time data, but there's approximately 900 students who are actively enrolled in ESOL. That represents approximately 5% of the total student population. If you look at the bottom of this slide, you'll see that I added a population trend history. You know, oftentimes you'll hear, ELL population is steadily growing in some districts. Our district has stayed relatively stable as far as percentage compared to overall population, at around that 5% mark over the last few years. The next number on the, on the top of the table, you'll see 346 recently exited ELLs. It's important to note, because we, once we, they, once we meet, once an ELL meets exit criteria, there's a monitoring period, because we want to ensure that they continue to be successful without being actively enrolled in the ESOL program. And so that represents about 2% of our population, and what I, the numbers I really love are the 29 and the 24. Over 29 different countries are represented in the district. I think that's an amazing asset to what students and families bring into our classrooms and our community. And 24 languages, with Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Vietnamese being the most prevalent. And it says other than English, because sometimes, many times, English is the first language in the home, yet students still are in need of ESOL students, services because of other languages spoken in the home. ELL students by grade span, you'll see the breakdown there, and you'll see that elementary school has overwhelming number. And based on the process of how we identify, it makes sense, you know, kids are coming in in kindergarten, that's when the first survey is, is taken, home language survey, and then you'll see the percentages that are secondary level as, as well. So a phrase we've kind of coined through the year, the years, is, as a team, is making connections for ELLs, because this work cannot be done alone. ELL students are general education students first and foremost, and it takes everybody in, in the district really to work at supporting students and families who are at the core of that network. And so we rely on so many of our departments and our community providers, and you'll see adult literacy programming there as we work with families, because we want to ensure that we are not only supporting the students, but we're supporting the family unit as a So highlighted areas of focus, in the core of it all, of course, is our strategic plan, and really, three bulleted points, increase, language proficiency, and progress. That is the key. When you are learning a language, it does not happen overnight, and so we want to consistently support that progress, that is going, and then accelerate student achievement, because as ELLs are learning the language, they're also learning content at the same time. So it's a consistent focus on those state standards, and of course, supporting our families. And so we have the framework of our systems of supports, and some just highlighted important points that we want to talk about, our ELL committees that work specifically to identify what is going to happen for our ELL students, our community resources, of course, it all begins with student identification, our strategies and accommodations, job embedded PD, really good, great teaching practice is what we're talking about. So as we're working with staff, we've, what's a simple way, or, you know, what is something that, we've tried to coin, we've called it 3V integration for ELL achievement. We could focus on these things, having some visuals in place, and that visuals could be a variety of things. It could be text, it could be video, it could be, you know, pictures, et cetera. How do we support vocabulary to ensure that we are increasing the ultimate goal of- How do we support vocabulary to ensure that we are increasing the ultimate goal of, of reading is to comprehend? And variety, there's not one size fits all, it's really depending on what the needs of the students are, what resources are in place, et cetera. And that's all happening as students are learning not only social language, but the academic language at the same time, which is connected to our content knowledge and state standards. And so oftentimes, a misconception might be, well, they, they learning, they know English now. I've talked, I've talked to them in the cafeteria. Well, they're not, they might not quite be there yet. And so to get them there, we focus on academic language literacy and vocabulary, linking knowledge and culture to learning. When you have something to connect your learning with, it cements and it's, and it increases your comprehensible input and language output. And so when we think about comprehensibility, we think about our receptive language and our expressive language. An expressive language such as speaking and writing, very difficult, or more difficult to attain than that receptive language where we're listening and reading. So we want input and output, promoting classroom interactions to build that oral language development and stimulating higher order thinking and the use of learning strategies. So there's a variety of just a non-inclusive list of supports, but what, this is really, what does it look like in the classroom? And so one of the first bullets that's on there in the last row is a safe and welcoming environment. It seems basic. And oftentimes, when you're thinking about scaffolding instruction, and it's great because I'm talking to an entire board of educators, you, you don't think about right away instructional strategies, making a safe and welcoming environment. That's a cultural practice, a routine. But how important is it that we're building relationships with our students, so especially in ELL, so that they, they feel safe to make a mistake in, in the language? And all of our kids, of course. But some other things, the use of bilingual or heritage language dictionaries and content glossaries, having that available pitcher, you know, pitcher glossaries, how, having students utilize those online. You know, so many years ago, we did not have the technology that we have now or access to it, that, you know, so the use of the technology accessibility tools. In our schools, we have tools such as Snap and Read, Microsoft Immersive Reader. Of course, there's Google Translate, different things that we are supporting our teachers with and our students so that they can use those strategies and shape themselves off of them, just like we would do if, if we were having difficulty, let's say, reading a text. Checking for understanding, most importantly, high, holding high expectations, ensuring that our ELLs are expected to learn those same state standards and that we're not watering down the standards, but we are supporting the language so that they can continue to make academic progress. Sometimes that might be word walls, the use of sentence stems in the classroom, or even strategies like a QSSR where a teacher is proposing a question, you know, giving that sentence stem shape, giving, you know, giving the, the student opportunity to have some wait time and then be able to respond so that they can participate, working with peers, both bilingual peers and monolingual peers, to help, to help support their language development. One of the supplemental resources that we've tried to do for our teachers as a department is having a Canvas course where it is, for lack of better words, a one-stop shop, where there's so many things even in the core curriculum. So you take Amplify that we just adopted, and there are built-in ELL embedded strategies supports. So for instance, knowledge videos, much of Amplify is, requires some background knowledge around core content. And so that's helpful, not for just ELLs, but for every student to connect the learning. Some accessibility tools, some self-paced professional development, and our ESOL teachers and our ESOL paraprofessionals in the school help to support our general ed and ESE teachers and really all of our school staff who work with our ELL students. And then, of course, there is the required endorsement and certification training that is required by the state, if you're teaching any and all. And at that point, I will turn it over to Dr. Lord.
Good afternoon. So as you can see, we have four categories for our instructional staff and administrators who are working with our ELL students. And depending on which category, the requirements are different for what they need to complete in order to be endorsed and to meet the requirements by the Florida decree. So we have the category one, the primary language arts teachers, so that would be your K through five, who are teaching reading, ELA, or secondary as well, anybody who is teaching reading, or pre-K included. So they would need to take five courses, which 300 hours, or two courses and to pass the subject area exam. The category two would be your social studies, mathematics, science, computer teachers. They would be required to take one course. And then category three would be all other. That could be your CTE teachers, your art teachers. They would be required to take 18 hours of training. And then your category five are your school-based administrators and school counselors. As you can see, that they take 60 ESOL hours, that's within the first three years of being hired as administrator. So in the Department of Educator Quality, we have developed five courses which meet the state requirements for the ESOL endorsement. The courses are taught in a blended model, which right now, they're online. You'll find them on a Saturday, teaching a course from 8:30 to 12:30 with generally, right now, 30 of our teachers involved discussing the ELL classroom and the strategies that are needed. We identify the teachers and give them the direct information about the courses because it's important for us that this doesn't fall through the cracks, the teachers have so many requirements, so we are monitoring this. The courses are promoted through our collaborator, as well as online communication through the educator quality department. And it has been developed by our specialists to meet the needs of our students here within the district. And it's important to note that this is free to all employees, so it doesn't have to be that they're out of field, that they do have the ability to take the courses at any time. This next slide really speaks to how we're addressing the ESOL out-of-field teachers because we know that this is critical, that our teachers are prepared to work with all students. So first of all, the monitoring piece, what we do, it is, reports are generated, and we work with Mr. Bass's department, with HR to, in certification, to make sure that we are identifying those teachers. And then, as you know, that comes before the board. The teachers and students are notified of the ESOL out-of-field, and emails are also sent to the teachers directly throughout to let them know again about the out-of-field, but also the courses that are coming up. Now, to me, the critical information here is the data and the changes that have been made. So if you look at 2018, 19, as well as the 2019, 20, that first line, we had 99 teachers that were reported that first semester in 2018. And then 126 teachers that were reported as out-of-field in ESOL. Moving to 2019, 20, it went to 101 and 96 teachers. And then you see that dramatic drop in 2020, 21. And this is a direct result of us working with principals, of us really communicating the need for the courses, what the requirements are, and how we can help that teacher to get there. That even in a pandemic, it was important enough for us to say, this is a requirement, and this is for our students. And so we went from 101 for semester in 2019 to 40, and then dropping down to 38. 2021, we are at 51 for the first semester, dropping down to 40. Part of that 51, we did have eight alternative certification teachers, and generally, they are needing all of the coursework for ESOL. So if they have a student who is an ELL learner, then they would be reported as out-of-field. And if you look at the course completions, we don't have that data because we changed formats in 2018, but 2019, we are at 73, 2020, 21, we're at 64. This year, first semester only, we're at 57. We anticipate going over 100 course completions this school year. Again, working with the team. And as it's been said several times, this is not one department, it's not one person, this is definitely teamwork and providing the supports for our teachers and most importantly, our students as well. And so that concludes our, our presentation about the ESOL and ELL student support that we provide here in School District of Indian River. Any questions that you may have?
Okay. We'll start with Dr. Shiff.
I don't at this time, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple, since I'm second on the bat here for workshop, I get to go in there. Can a parent request re-enrollment once her student has been exited from ESOL?
That's a great question. Absolutely. Via the ELL committee, we would meet with that family, we would, I'd look at the child's record hol- We would look at the child's-
It's on?
I think it is.
I think it is. Oh, there we go.
Right direction.
We would look at the child's record holistically, looking at what interventions have been in place, what interventions are needed to be tweaked, has there been attendance issues or in and out of the country? Sometimes we've had that occur as well, where we've exited a child from ESOL. They leave the country, have no exposure to academic English language, and now are back. So you know, but it's, it's an individual, case by case scenario.
Okay. But it is possible.
Yes.
Because I've, I've been in situations where parents felt like they wanted to get back and it wasn't possible in the past.
Right.
Okay.
Possible, dependent on the needs of the individual child, absolutely.
Sure. And you're right about the comfortable, the classroom has to be comfortable for all students to be feeling, feeling like they can make mistakes, especially students that are learning a second language. Think about it as an adult, if you're going into another country and you want to try to say something, you want to be very careful what you say, especially depending on the country you're going to and what you plan to say. So I, I understand that apprehensive on, on a child's level and also the parent. They have to be comfortable in speaking when they come to the school, so that comfort level has to be there. Can't say enough about kids at Hope and how important that is for that. Canvas course you mentioned for ESOL. So you said that there's a blended course that people can take, and I, I see our ESOL out-of-field is going down, but it's still not at zero.
Right.
So I see it's only on Saturdays and it's blended, so I'm assuming some of it's online, some of it's live. And if that's the case, you know, Saturdays, I know that's not a day when they teach, but that's a day when a lot of parents, their kids are doing activities. And so I'm sure that that's been a real stumbling block for some people. Are we offering them any other days of the week?
So what we also offer are some other solutions, so we do have some outside resources as well. And when we're not in the pandemic, we are able to be a little bit more flexible in the timing as well.
Yeah, I remember when I took mine, I took it from North Florida group. Yeah.
Right. Right. There are some other resources that we provide. And we give them that information, here are some other resources that you can go to as well.
Right. Because I couldn't attend Saturdays, so I just want to make sure because I'm hearing a lot of times, oh, well, I couldn't make the times that were available. So my question is, how many times are we making available and are we being flexible? So it sounds like we are. Okay, thank you. Ms. Rosario?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for presenting. I have a few questions. Actually, this was for Dr. Moore because I requested the comparison of the achievement gap, so I'm hoping that he has those numbers. On what is the demographic data in comparison ESL with other student groups? Do we have that? Oh, she's already prepared. Of course you would have it.
I do have that, Mrs. Rosario.
Good. Thank you.
And so, when you're looking, I don't, I don't think I can get this microphone right today, but I'm trying, so bear with me. When you're looking at ELL achievement gap, of course, a key factor that we always want to talk about is that it's that ever-changing subgroup, really more so than any other subgroup in my personal opinion. And over the last year, we, ELA, the district ELA achievement in comparison to the state, we were one percentage point below that, looking at achievement gap. And this is based on EDU data statistics, which is publicly available, as you're aware. Mathematics, we were four percentage points below the state. Science, we were two percentage, excuse me, one, two percentage points as far as gap above the state. And social studies as well, we were below. So 29% in social studies to the state average of 32%. So the differential as far as, I'm going to start over because I'm not reading that data right, where it's confusing me how I'm reading it, so bear with, I'm going to start over.
I actually understood it, so.
Okay, all right.
I got you. You are, we are, as a district, one percentage point below the state ELA, four percent-
As far as variance. So when we're looking at gap, when they look, you compare when the academic achievement between one subgroup versus the, those not in the subgroup. And so the district gap was 30, for instance, for ELL, for ELA, compared, and then the state was at 31. So we were 1% variance really below the state, which is actually better. Does that, that's why I was going to start over. Does that make sense? Am I explaining that right? So our achievement gap was at 30, the state was at 31. So we were 1% below them, which is better. Math, we were at 18, the state was at 22. So we were four percentage points better than the state, a negative number better.
That's a better way to put it.
Yes, yeah. And so see, I was in a safe environment where I felt okay to make a mistake, and thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, yeah, it was, it was a good one. In science, the district was at 36, the state was at 34. So, you know, 2% above the state gap, so not, not as good. Not as good, a little variance there. And of course, this is a year coming off a pandemic where we definitely, I cannot say enough about our ELL team, our paraprofessionals out in the school, taking calls at night and, you know, it really was something to make sure we're supporting families and our students and, and especially when we were on remote learning. Social studies, the district was at 41, and the state was at 35. So again, another area certainly for improvement. Of course, social studies, we're looking at US history and civics. So, and when we're thinking, those are both secondary tested subject areas. And when we talk about cementing background knowledge to what we know, when we have a child who's coming from a different country, civics is going to be a tough subject initially, right, as they're learning the language. So we know that's an area for growth as well.
What about within, that's us with the state, what about within our district? Our ELL population, our African-American population, the achievement gap between those comparisons? Do we have that?
I do have that.
You're always so well-prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. I try. Okay. So district, 2021 school year, ELL population, ELA, we were at 24, non-ELL 54%, a variance of, of 30. Math, 33, non-ELL 51, variance of 18. Science, 22, non-ELL 58, variance of 36. Social studies, 29 to non-ELL 70, a variance of 41. When you're looking at students who are ELL versus non-ELL within the district. Again, that's EDU data.
Can you share that with us?
Sure.
At some, some point, maybe send it to our emails.
I'll send it to Dr. Moore.
So I didn't get a chance to write all of that down. So does that show that the ELL popu-, which population has- So does that show that the ELL popu-, which population has the greatest achievement gap in our district?
I think it really varies depending on the tested area. Looking at it, I think it's data you'd have to analyze, honestly, because it varies among the ELA, math, science, and social studies tested areas. I don't think I can give an opinion to that. I have one, but I'm not comfortable giving it.
Okay. All right, so thank you for that. I have another question. What I didn't, I see on one of the slides, the highlighted areas of focus that we have, that you have differentiated instruction on there. This is a topic that some board members have recently discussed, even myself, over and over and over again, that our district as a whole really needs to hone in on that. We really need to do a better job at differentiating instruction, in my opinion. And some other board members have also shared the same thought. But how is the actual instruction, what does that look like? Is it a push-in, is it a pull-out? So if you have two students in a classroom, for example, who are Ls and everybody else is not, you know, what does that look like? Does an ESL teacher go in, does a power professional go in, do they pull the student out? Is there a full inclusion ELL program? Do we have content area ELL, you know, courses?
That's a lot of questions, Mrs. Rosario.
So that's why, how does that look?
So sure, I'm going to try my best to keep them in order and answer them for you. So consistent with the consent decree and our SAM model, schools that have 15 or more of our, of one native language has an ELL in our district teacher assistant. And so the vast majority of our schools meet that criteria. There are a few that do not. We have, both of our high schools have a school-based, full-time ESOL resource teacher strategically done for, to get them to graduate, which we are very proud of our graduation rate this past year and increase well over the state average. And then we have our ESOL programmatic staff who support all the district schools, particularly in the assessment and planning for, you know, for strategies and accommodations that are needed. When you're talking about differentiation in the classroom, that's one thing we've made a conscious effort through collaborative efforts with Dr. Lord's department to ensure that we are not trying to make it one more thing for teachers. How is it specifically through the collaborative planning process, starting there, how are we intentionally planning for supports? And I want to, of course, we're talking about ELLs, but really all students. Because I would love to say to you, and I'm certainly not a trained linguist by any means, that we have some magic strategies that we're sprinkling on ELLs and they're magically, you know, learning English. This is really just good instructional pedagogy and techniques. And so when you're looking at, for instance, planning, with, I'll take our new curriculum. We have, and I think I referenced this in the presentation, core knowledge videos. If the content is something that we don't think that an ELL or non-ELL has any connection with to increase and accelerate the learning, that's a video we have to intentionally plan, let's say, to show, to build that background knowledge. When it comes to different strategies in that collaborative planning process, and Dr. Lord, feel free to piggyback as needed, it might be how, what's the delivery of that instruction? So maybe I'm introducing a concept and I'm going to do something like a four corners in the room. And I'm going to have visuals to increase students' interest, right, the engagement. I'm learning about the moon. I might have this, you know, the space program over here, rocks, et cetera, the geology of what would be on the moon. And we're doing, utilizing those strategies to get students to speak and to learn more about that academic language. And so it is a constant collaboration of how can we support teachers in the general education classrooms? So we rely on their content knowledge in all grade levels. But I would not be your calculus teacher, you know, that was, I can't do that. And I love our calculus teachers. So when we have an ELL in high school who's taking calculus and might be new to the country, we have to depend and rely on that core content expert. Because I can't, I can't help you in calculus. But what I can help you do is show you how to use your technology supports, how to demonstrate perhaps a concept. Again, not teach the concept, but use those visuals in the classrooms. How to use chart paper, how to develop anchor strategies for conversation, how to ensure that you're having, and I'm purposely using a high school example because the myth sometime is that we only do differentiation in the elementary classroom. And that is incorrect. It is pre-K or to 12. But how, you know, how are you in that calculus class ensuring that you're holding students responsible for cooperative learning groups and that they're talking to each other, helping each other, et cetera? So it really is that collaborative process.
And that differentiation is a focus area for professional development. This coming January 31st, we have Amplify who's providing an ELL session in the morning and an ESE session in the afternoon because we know those supports are needed. And we are all supporting it. And as Karen has said, this goes across the board. But our specialists have been in the schools, providing this professional development to teacher teams. Our coaches get continual PD on this as well, as well as our administrators. What does differentiation look like? What should you be seeing in the classroom? So this has been a focus area for our district.
Yeah, I know the sensitivity about not having to burden our teachers with something else to do. But this is something that should be a non-negotiable, to be able to support your students in your classroom, no matter who they are, whether they're general ed, I mean, a native language speaker or an ELL, even ESE students. You know, you still need to create lessons that are geared towards each student in your classroom. And so though I know that there is a sensitivity towards that, they still ought to be doing something extra for that, for those students in there. Do we have, my last question and I will move on. Do we offer language assistance programs or software-based language assistance programs like Rosetta Stone or something else in addition to some of the things that you mentioned? Because I didn't see that anywhere here. And I know years ago, we used to.
Yeah, years ago, we used to. iReady, Achieve 3000 or Weta, what they call Weta-primed instructional software. So when you take, for instance, iReady, you have supports built in as the audio, the details, the directions in native language, that sort of thing to teach the language. The software program is just one aspect of learning. Unfortunately, what sometimes we saw was that if there was a standalone program, it would, the solution was put the child on that program and leave them there for hours on end. And that's not how you learn a language.
Right.
And then what teacher is monitoring the program? What kind of teacher supports the teachers, the key? And interaction in that classroom is the key. And so we utilize the instructional technology that the district is using to build that language acquisition and then pull in things like, for instance, in iReady, there is a teacher toolbox that specifically identifies skills, language-based skills, that we can use in small group.
So are we monitoring how that's being used? If that is actually being used, if translation is actually being used through iReady for this?
I don't know, I don't believe you can monitor the actual, you know, amount of time that is being translated, the data that was far as progress, and we do monitor that. And looking at, for instance, diagnostic one to diagnostic two, how much growth is being made? And are you on track for monitoring growth?
So I wonder if, you know, on the website where there are all these apps that are offered for families and for students to access at home, there's like math tutoring and reading tutoring. I forget what that page is called. But you know what I, the student, I'm wondering if we can actually add a language assistive program there for students to have access to at home for additional supports. Maybe not necessarily something to do in the school, but certainly even for parents to access. Because we have a population of parents, not only other students, right, but our parents who of those students don't speak English. You know, there's an array of different resources that we might be able to offer to help in, you know, closing this achievement gap that also includes family involvement, right? Are we giving translate, are we providing translators during parent-teacher conferences? Are we really, you know, translating all the documents that go home? Are we reaching out to parents in their home language to encourage them to come in and participate, again, in their native language? Are we really doing these things? I know during, you mentioned the pandemic, and I know during the pandemic, several families have reached out, had reached out to me because they, the children were online. Even elementary school children were going online, but the parents felt really bad because they didn't know what, how to, you know, maneuver a computer. You know, how to go on and do the little, you know, the canvas and all that other stuff. So I think, you know, that that's an area that I think that we might be able to do good and probably not Felsmer because their community is so well-taught, but just in general, you know. I just think that there are so many other areas. I've gone into classrooms and I have not seen bilingual dictionaries. I have not seen content area glossaries. I have personally not seen all Ls have this access during testing and assessments or extended time, which is supposed to be, you know, provided for them. So there are some things that I think we can do better at to make sure that it is consistent throughout. But I do know that your team and the ESL departments that are going out into the schools are doing the best that they can. I just don't know for the amount of ELLs that we have, that it might be completely overwhelming for this, you know, for the amount of ESL power professionals and teachers that we have in the district. You have close to 400 students. Did I get that? No, 800. You have close to 800 students. And how many staff? How many do we have?
Total staff?
Yeah.
I, total staff as far as teachers, paraprofessionals?
No, ESL supports.
So the schools, with the exception of a handful of schools, all have an ESOL teacher assistant. And then we have two high school, school-based staff and the district staff that you see sitting in the back.
Yeah, that's a lot. We have a very, very large group of Ls. So I think that, you know, kind of maybe providing more supports to this area is going to allow to close the achievement gap so that we don't make it wider and wider throughout the next coming years, for sure. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a few points. Thank you, Ms. Mallitt, Dr. Lord, and all staff members who are here today. I think the most important part of your PowerPoint is when you say, "We are all academic English language learners." That just encompasses so much to me. And what you also said with the relationship in the classroom with the students, you know, support that the students have, support of the core teacher. What you said in calculus is so true. You know, in high school, you have to figure out, where do I need to be? What's the best avenue? What's strategic to help the students who are here? Ms. Mallitt, when we looked at that first pie, when we had 77% in elementary, 13 in high, and 10 in middle, is that just because they're exiting out after elementary or why does that change so much?
Generally speaking, yes. So we, we look at the criteria that's established for exit. And in K to 12, it's our language proficiency, K to 12, K to 2, excuse me, our language proficiency assessment. And so many of our students, of course, their initial enrollment is kindergarten. And so when they get to second, third grade, they have sometimes met that proficiency assessment.
Great. And just, again, the part where you said visuals, vocabulary, and variety, that is just a key in so many of the content areas. And congratulations on the graduation rate. And thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiff, did you have something?
No, every, everything I had has been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I had some additional things. How when you mentioned, okay. So iReady, you mentioned that it's in different languages. How many languages do they offer when a student goes on there?
So some of the directions are available in Spanish.
Just in Spanish?
Yes.
Okay, so we have children with other languages?
Right. We have children with 20-plus languages, correct.
So what are we doing for them, for those directions? I mean, you're talking about iReady is the answer.
Right. Well, and we have to, we have to remember that sometimes our students don't have proficiency, even our Spanish-speaking students. In their own language. And so really, it's those core teaching practices of teaching foundational literacy to all of our students, regardless of where they come from or the language spoken.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm just concerned about those kids. I remember when we had Saudi Arabian kids that came in the door and we didn't have any dictionaries and we didn't have anything, you know, we didn't know what to do. And so we had to reach out and get help. And so we called the state to get help. So are we doing that?
If there is a situation where our department does not have a community resource, certainly we would have to pursue that or district resource.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say kudos to your entire team. Thank you for all you do. I know there are a lot of unsung heroes every day in the classroom that are sitting side by side with kids, helping them understand what's happening in the classroom. Because sometimes it's, you know, they can go a whole day and not understand what the heck happened in the school that day. And it is frustrating for children. So we appreciate people being there for kid support and to help them with that understanding of how to acquire the language. So, thank you.
I have a follow-up.
Okay.
Sorry, I changed my mind.
Okay.
And if you address this and I missed it, because I had to step out a couple of times, I apologize. Are there, one of the things, you mentioned that sometimes the issue isn't simply with the child and the English language, it's with the adult trying to make the translation, not only in language, but electronically. But the other thing that I've seen is that the student may be wanting to communicate things to the adult who doesn't have the language proficiency skills. And I know that's kind of out of our scope. But is there a way or how do we support when the children, the child is getting the help they may need in school, but the issue is not, are they getting it in school? It's how does it translate into getting the support they need at home?
Sure. And that's a great question and quite frankly, a passion of mine. You know, we talk about collaboration amongst departments often. I always and every, in all of our work through my many departments, within the federal program department, you know, keeping that family unit at the core. I sit on the Board of Literacy Services of Indian River County for that very reason, to ensure that we're, there are community agencies out there that are really providing those adult literacy services. Of course, we have our own TCTC that does that as well, the college, and really trying to engage those families to, to learn English and to be able to support their child while maintaining their first language and emphasize the importance of that. Because there is never, we want our families to feel empowered. And so even if they are not proficient in the English language, it's read to your child in Spanish, read to your child in Vietnamese, you know, the joy of learning in and of itself. And so, you know, we are working to connect families in that aspect.
Yeah, I think, I think that's part of my question. But I am wondering, what is our, somewhere between capacity and responsibility to ensure the support at home so that kids who may be successful in a school environment but can't do that without the support they need at home? I understand that there are community agencies who do that, and I understand you're saying you're working with those. I'm wondering what is our slash capacity, responsibility to work with those families directly?
So let me give you an example. Mrs. Edlin back there, Mrs. Rosio, just met with a parent this, was that this week?
It's Monday.
Last week, thank you. Today's Monday. You know, the board meeting Tuesday to Monday is stirring me off. Just last week, who is not proficient in language, and this is just one example, there are many, but, and sat with that parent and showed them how to access the Spanish text on Amplify, our core curriculum, which is available. And the parent can access that through that curriculum page, which we do have supplemental resources for families to practice on that same page. And showed them how to use that as a previewing strategy for the lesson. So that would be one example of something like that.
Yeah, exactly. So that's exactly my point, and I'm, but that's one example of one parent and one, one person at the district. How broadly do, do we have the capacity to stretch that?
So we are, we are trying to maximize the support that we've received to our parents. We actually, at the School Choice Fair, we had a DigiKnow session specifically in Spanish that showed the parents how to access different resources on our website, how to use the Google Translate option to translate the website to toggle between languages. We have a video that is made and out there. We do have bilingual videos available online as well. In our recent Parent Leadership Council meeting with our ELL parents, and we had a magnificent turnout in the middle of, you know, another surge with the pandemic. That was information that was also shared. We've gone out into the community to show parents how to utilize Focus Parent Portal so that they can access and ask questions to their teachers and check grades, attendance, that sort of thing, getting, having them understand the importance of coming to school every day. Some of our students, especially if you have parents who perhaps are immigrant families, they don't understand the system. And so let's just say students can be very, oh yeah, I did that, I completed that work. And so how, how, how do you go about helping the families and checking that and making sure that they're really understanding what's happening with their child? So those would be some examples. And I think there's always room to expand that.
Yeah, final question.
Yep.
And in the interests of time, well, so this is all the stuff you are doing with the resources you have. What's your wish list that you're not doing, that if you could have would make a fundamental difference to the work you're able to do? We're in budget season.
Should you answer that, or should I?
I think it's a joint.
Yeah, I, I think we could probably both come up with a few things. Wish list, I think that we, you know, I don't know if there'll ever be enough staff, right? When we talk about staff, human resources are the most powerful resource we have, in my humble opinion. And so we're, we're utilizing, Superintendent was very gracious in the last ESAR project to, we're adding a couple teacher and assignment positions that will support our ELLs and our other vulnerable subgroups out in the schools, so we're, we'll see that coming through. I think there's some, always some good suggestions about having different supplemental materials. Teacher training is a huge one. You know, right now, we do have teachers who are voluntarily participating in professional learning communities that our department is running on their own, because they're so motivated to ensure that they're helping their students. So, you know, looking at, you know, ways to support things like that is always a positive. And quite frankly, the biggest wish list, which I don't know if any of us have control over, is stability. So, so that everyone's in school, teacher and student, and we have consistent instruction happening on a daily basis. And I think that certainly has been a challenge over the last couple years, when, you know, students and teachers have to be in and out because of the situation we're all in.
And one support that we, right now, do have are some dollars for extended learning, continuing that down the road for our students. So the CARES Act was certainly helpful last year. We have the Moonshot Academy, when you were talking about supports, not only for students but families. We have parent days with that, and they come in, and, and they get the idea of how to help their child with their learning. So expanding those programs, but certainly, I think, also that teacher professional development, having time that's separate, that you can pay the teachers to attend that would be huge.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Rosio.
Are you done? I don't want to talk over you.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have a follow-up. I want to come back to this language software system, because Mrs. Barrenbrook brought up a good point about iReady only being, only having some questions translated, or some portions translated into only Spanish, because that certainly leaves an entire group of other Ls unsupported. Dr. Moore, we really need to look into a language program that will be available for all of the languages that we have here in the district, because literacy is gonna be the key there. Vocabulary development for ELL students is critical. And if they don't gather or practice in these language-assisted programs, or these language-assisted software programs, like, it doesn't necessarily have to be Rosetta Stone, because there's so many out there right now, but for those that are like a Rosetta Stone, it actually walks students through and moves them along the path based on their progress. So if a student moves through it more quickly, then we know that they are, they're learning the language quicker, or, you know, they're, they're gathering that information to move them forward quicker, which can only help them while they're in the content area. And I, and I want to also, I want to also hone in on this wish list. Content area glossaries are critical. Content area glossaries, they are so important for the child to be able to take that home with them, because that's another support at the home level that Dr. Schiff was just mentioning, and that I was mentioning before, that parents can actually open up in their home language and assist their children, understanding the homework assignment that they have, or the project that they have, you know, just looking at the content area glossaries, or the coursework glossaries, or something like that. When I was in New York, there was a, an entire resource from the DOE that was actually sent to the schools, which were content area glossaries for every subject. For, you know, science, in science, it was in biology, it was in chemistry, it was in every single subject. And then elementary and social studies, and, you know, you had the social, we were talking about social studies is a really large area, you know, of, of, or a subject that needs a lot of help for our Ls. Civics, there were all of these glossaries that were provided. I don't know if we have that here at the DOE. I'm not sure if that's offered. And if that isn't, then what can we do in terms of creating, through maybe collaborative planning, content area glossaries, and then go through that entire process of having those translated? That's a big, that's a monumental task, but it is critical. It is absolutely necessary to help children understand their content.
So we do have available online content area glossaries.
Awesome. Is that, does that come from the DOE?
It does not. It comes from our Making Connections for Canvas course.
There you go.
That our amazing ESL team is continually working to develop.
And do all of the, do all of the content area classes have those?
Online, the, as far as what's available online, like science, social studies, et cetera, have them, it's electronic, online. We have purchased hard copy content glossaries and dictionaries and continue to do so as needed, as, 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 you know, as teachers, as there's a need or request.
So every ESL, 800 ESL students have content area glossaries?
Our kindergartners who don't read probably do not.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a big chunk of them.
Yeah.
But certainly, every school has access. It's unfortunate that you said that you were in a classroom that I'm, I'm assuming that a child you felt should have had one and didn't. Certainly, that child has access to one. There is not one of our schools that does not have the available resources as far as dictionaries or glossaries, that we actually have them coded in our library system as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the last thing that I was gonna follow up on is the level of instruction. And I didn't, I didn't ask this before, but when instruction is given to students who are Ls, I mean, I know you know this, they shouldn't be offered based on grade level. They should be offered based on language level. So you can have five kids in an eighth-grade class who are Ls, not all five of them are on the same level, language level. So you can have a very beginning ELL student, a middle, you know, ELL student, and a very, very advanced ELL student. You can have an ELL student who is completely illiterate in their native language, which makes it very, very difficult for them to catch up to a student who is completely literate in their native language. And so you have all these different levels that could be in the same grade, but how we, how the supports are given, this is why differentiation is so important. How giving that instruction to those five students in that one grade level is so critical, because that makes a big difference. What you're giving to one, you can't give to another. Just because they're Ls, you cannot put them all in the same box.
And you're absolutely correct. And so one of the things that we are working with our teachers and our other district departments to recognize is how do we, how do we evaluate and access those language proficiency levels, which are available on our student information system and focus readily to any teacher with a roster of an ELL? And we, and again, this is one resource, it's not the end-all, be-all, and, but our WIDA can do descriptors. WIDA is the consortium that our state language proficiency assessment is developed from. And they literally have the levels going across the top, and at different grade clusters, what can you expect a child to be able to do? And so starting from pre-K all the way to 12th grade, there should not be one teacher of an ELL, not one, who does not have this hard copy. And our ESL team has ensured that every teacher, we three-hole punched them ourselves and put them on a ring, that they would be there in the classroom. Again, it's one resource, not the end-all, be-all, because it still takes that master teacher, through the work of collaborative planning, to intentionally plan the supports that are needed for our students, and to know your students. And to develop that relationship, if you have three ELLs in your classroom, do you know where each of those three are coming from? Do you know their educational background? Do you know their experiences that they've had in schooling, in their, you know, was there a, a, a transition between, if they're coming from out of country, for instance, of a lack of formal education? I mean, I could go on and on, but that's why we have ensured that every teacher, and if a teacher who's watching us does not have it, call me. I will ensure that you have it. And it is electronically available as well on our Making Connections for Canvas course.
Yeah, I've seen those, those are, those are pretty good resources. But they're rubrics, you know, they're just generalities, and sometimes you have a student in the classroom that doesn't necessarily fall exactly within that, that rubric. And so that's where the teacher uses their professional, you know, understanding and, and changes the lesson accordingly. So I think that's, that's just critical. So there's a lot of work to be done here, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah, one, one other point I want to make. You mentioned Amplify's professional development. When we were looking at Amplify and trying to get them, you know, approved and all that that we went through, having spoken to the sales lady, and she assured us that we were going to get extra supports for our schools of need. And I hear that they're coming down to do this ESL, E S E training. Have they fulfilled what they said they were going to do on this extra need support?
So yes, they have, and they continue to do so.
Okay.
So they meet regularly with our administrative and our instructional coaches, first to make sure that, again, they know what to anticipate, but I think the critical piece that they've done this year is actually gone to all of our Title I schools for elementary and secondary, and have conducted walks with them, and helped them with planning, and really dove into the content itself to help them understand how to navigate Amplify, because it does look significantly different from what we've had in the past. So that has been a huge lift for our teachers, and I have received feedback from them. That was critical. In fact, they are also going to be here on February 1st and doing some walkthroughs at some of our schools, both elementary and secondary. Again, having people who have taught Amplify before coming in and giving us feedback on where we stand. They have an implementation rubric that we look at with them, and so that schools can self-assess where are they hitting the mark, and where do they now need to focus their efforts. We also, on any of the district in-service days, we have been providing full day in services for the teachers as well, to, again, help them with the planning, because that's the critical piece with Amplify, because it is so rich, and there are so many pieces to it. So we want to make sure that they're taking advantage of all the components of Amplify. So yes, in answer to your question, they have been able to fulfill what they promised.
Because I, I got some feedback from our principal that said that she was getting support. I just want to make sure that was happening across the district.
Absolutely.
And also, she was mentioning that her teachers were saying it was too difficult for her students, and then they realized, well, wait a minute, we need to make sure that our students are able to do this.
Yes.
And yes, they can do this, and you've got to believe in them, and you've got to scaffold it to make sure the kids can do it. And kids are very, very in tune with the fact that they can achieve, it's just they need a teacher that believes they can. And so that principal is really pushing that belief, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
And that is happening through that collaborative planning, too, where they are intentionally, what does it look like this week, but really getting into the how they're delivering it, the differentiation, making sure, again, that they're meeting the needs of all students, because we know this is a heavy lift. There are some high expectations to Amplify. So we're excited and looking forward to three down, three years down the road, what does this really look like? But making sure that our student needs right now in the classrooms today are being met.
Great. Thank you.
And just personally, thank each of you and your team who's, who's back here, and I know they're gonna probably, when you go take them to lunch now. Maybe they should buy you lunch for you sitting here answering all these questions, but the depth.
The wish list, Dr. Moore, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. I was like, how is staff gonna answer a board member asking a wish list in front of the superintendent? Good answer.
No.
You navigated that nicely, but the, the volume of work that is in place, it was really enjoyable just to sit back and relax and, and not worry about the questions being asked, knowing that there is an answer. And it's just not support being provided, it is strategy being provided. So the depth in which each of you are, are doing this work is abundantly clear, not only through your words, but through the actions we see in schools, and, and significant work is being done. So thank you very, very, very much.
Yes, thank you. Well, prepare.
Thank you.
So our, our next item, and I was just saying.
It is 1:46. Dr. Moore, is there anybody that needs to take a break? Before we get into the next one?
I'm in it.
I'm sorry?
Said I wouldn't turn it down, but I'm not desperate.
You wouldn't turn it down? Do you want to do that? I saw Mr. Seymour left the room.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do 10-minute break?
Perfect.
Okay, 10 minutes, so we'll be back, well, let's do nine minutes, we'll be back at 1:50. 1:55, 1:55.
That'd be three minutes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item will be presented by Mr. Seymour regarding our Climate Task Force. As you may recall, our Climate Task Force was Mr. Seymour's, one of his new initiatives, undertaking the responsibilities under his new office. And it was his desire really to accelerate this work in order to ensure that we can hit the ground running and really start to build momentum around equity and access. I'll turn it over to Mr. Seymour, and he could set up our next presenter.
Thank you. Madam Chair and the Board, again, this is a great pleasure. As you recall, as part of the Achieve 2025 District Strategic Plan, the school board really worked to focus on transformational impacts of 2025 and what the actual strategic plan would look like once it was in the play. And there were two of the transformational impacts that were really focused on it, is that all students are accepted and included within our school communities, and all students have access to programs that supports their talents and interests. So in that, we did create the Climate Task Force, and as you can see, it's convening leaders and maximizing access to education. And with that being said, I got to speak on Mr. Thornton. I've been knowing him for some time and his children. What a great guy. Back when I was in high school, he actually was my coach, and I ended up, as a teacher, being his son's coach. And his son is now a well-respected fireman. And in addition to that, while I was principal at Northport K-8, his daughter was one of my science and biology teachers in the classroom. And she was afraid to come out of the classroom, so I kept pushing her to be an administrator. So whenever my APs were out, I would put her in one of those positions. And she became an assistant principal, a great and outstanding principal, and now a district administrator in St. Lucie County. Well, I didn't want to call her name.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious. Okay, you tell me later.
But that's Mr. Thornton's daughter, one of them. And while I was principal of Oslo Middle, I had his other daughter, who is a very hardworking and dedicated guy, and his counselor, and did a great job for me. So with that being said, I would like to bring up Mr. Thornton. And again, it is a great pleasure to have him lead what a powerful group, hardworking and dedicated group of individuals from all different backgrounds, but all connected to education. Mr. Thornton. Dr. Shafte told me to keep it to 30 seconds. So how did I do, Doc?
Good afternoon, Mr. Thornton.
Good afternoon. If you all don't mind, I would like to take my mask off. Is that okay?
Yes.
So you all can hear me a little bit better. First of all, I would like to thank you for Mr. Seymour for that introduction. The check is in the mail. And to Dr. Moore for allowing Mr. Seymour to have the vision to assemble such a community task force, a climate task force. And to Dr. Shafte for allowing her staff to be present at all of our meetings that we've had, putting your words in the water to help row the boat. And especially when it adhered to items that our group had asked questions that is pertinent to the district's strategic plan. I forgot that one. Now, be mindful, and to the Board, thank you all for allowing me to take some time out of your business schedule to make a presentation as well. But be mindful that what I share with you today is only information, and information purposes only. This is our progress report, a three-month progress report. We've only met three times. So we want to come back and share with you some of the findings of what we have, because basically, most of the stuff that we're doing now is ongoing. So we haven't finalized anything as of yet. The Climate Task Force, convening leaders and maximizing access to education. That's powerful. A bunch of, a group of citizens coming together and to work collaboratively with the district. Our purpose and structure. The Climate Task Force will provide directions and recommendations to the staff of the school district of Indian River County to ensure equity and excellence in each of our schools. Basically, my interpretation of that, we are a group of citizens from the community, working as a liaison group between the community and the district, identifying areas of concern that impacts the community, whether it's negatively or positively toward the district. But we want to work collaboratively to get to solve any issues that's out there. And I can't think of any group better than a group that is working for the, in the community, that's working on behalf of our most prized commodity, and that's our children. So that's first and foremost. And as you can see, I'm the chair. I volunteered to chair this committee. And Mrs. Stacy Clem, who's not here today due to personal reasons, issues, but we're not going to allow her, get her off the hook, because the next time, if you allow us to come back, she's going to have to do double duty. Now, the task force members, some of you probably recognize the names, the many of the names that's on this committee. And it's my understanding this committee had personal invites to gather and convene to make up this committee. And we're just a group of citizens from the community, from various backgrounds that consist of, but not limited to, parents, grandparents, company CEOs, bankers, realtors, retired educators, and administrators. I can honestly say that I haven't had too many opportunities to work with groups of this magnitude, extremely professional, congenial, cordial, and it's just a joy to work with those individuals. And they exemplifies the word "climate." What a great group to work for, work with. I eagerly anticipate giving to every meeting to see exactly what's coming out of their heads. This group is so cerebral, and I'm inviting you all at some of our meetings to come and listen, to see what's going on from individuals in the community. You'll be amazed. I want to tell you something about this group. I missed the very first meeting that we had. It was in August. I'll never forget it. It was August 19, and that was my wife's birthday. And I couldn't, I wouldn't miss that for anything. My wife, I believe she's the only person that I know of that celebrate the entire month. But then, on the 19th, I couldn't miss it. So I told Mr. Seymour, I can't be there today. I missed the meeting. He was saying, well, bring your wife with me. I said, am I going to bring all of her children and grandchildren also? So there was no way that I could make that meeting. So I didn't know anything about this group. But it was my understanding that no one volunteered to chair. So then I received a call about two or three months, about two or three weeks later. Mr. Seymour asked me, no one volunteered to be the chair. Would you be the chair? You know you don't want to say no to one of your former students. So I volunteered. And in our very first meeting in November, I saw this group. And I'm going to tell you a little story about this group here. And I think Pam, Ms. Dan Pierre, you are aware of it. Mr. Seymour, you might be aware of it. It was a, I read this book about, by Jim Collins, From Good to Great. And I would advise any administrator to read that book. I truly believe that we have a good district, but not a great district yet. And if they, if all administrators read this, in essence, what Mr. Collins was saying, a good leader would know their individuals that they're working with. And they will be able to place those individuals on the right seat on the bus, to move the bus forward, and then move any organization forward from good to great. And at our very first meeting, you see where it stated in the introduction, but the chair and so forth, I had each individual to introduce themselves and give me a quick bio or resume. After hearing all the resumes and the bios of these individuals, I, after that, I was trying to put my administrator's hat on, saying, now I'm going to have to put these people on the right, on the right seat on the bus. But after hearing the resumes and the bios of these individuals, I changed everything. At the end, I told them that I'm no longer the chair. I'm the bus driver. You all tell me where you want to go. Because they were such a cerebral group, that this group, they had, they have withstandingness. Have you ever heard that? They have withstandingness. And they are excellent in retired educators, whatever field that they're in. And they bringing it for the betterment of our children. Now, you see the task force action steps. I'm going to try, Ms. Clem not here today, I'm going to try to put all three of these months together, because they were actually carryovers, because we could never get enough time to fulfill our obligation for the day. And after we established our norms that would govern our meeting, we have one norm that I'm going to stick along and I stay with on every meeting. And that's starting and ending on time. And I'm a stickler for that. So therefore, we have a two-hour meeting, and we just don't have enough time to finish what we set out to do for that particular day. So it's just a carryover from month to month. Now, in our first meeting, I asked each individual to identify no more than two areas that concerned them about the district. And asking that question, we accumulated 29 concerns that they had. Now, the next step was to, after we identified the, I don't know whether you all can see that or not, the concerns, we had to sort them out and place them in the five areas of the district's strategic plan. And after doing that, we had a breakout session. And we divided the group into two groups, one, academic success and communication and engagement. And what their task at the time was to combine all like areas and synthesize them and come up with priority areas in that particular group. And I was at academic success, and all areas in that group pointed toward career technical classes. And the second bullet was minority students and honors and advanced placement classwork. But we had to, first of all, address the career technical classes, classes. And we did a lot of brainstorming while we needed it. And we did a lot of brainstorming while we needed it and while it would impact our students. But before we can go any further, we needed some baseline data. And our baseline data nationally indicated that only 62% of the graduating seniors would move on to pursue a four-year degree. So now, what are we going to do for the other 38, 38% that's out there? Now, we needed more data. What was, what, what was the district offering that 38% as far as career technical placement or advancements? And, and I did some, did some homework, and I was presently, I was presently gratifying, it was, it was extremely gratifying to me that between the two high schools, Sebastian and Vero Beach High School, we had 20 career technical classrooms offered. That's amazing. That's astounding. But the problem that we had with that is when we looked at many of those areas, or those classes that, that was being offered, many of them were prerequisite to RSC. So students had to leave our district and move on to complete the certificate or get their certificates to get moved out into the, to the workforce. Now, there's another group some, someplace that chose not to go either. What are we doing for those particular students? Because we want every student, every graduating student from Indian River County to be successful, whether they move on to a four-year institution, or move on to RSC, RSC, or go right into the workpl, workforce. Now, there's another, we need some more baseline data now. What, what type of classes that we offer for those students that choose to do either? Now, we got to go back and get some additional data. I don't know whether it's in your, in your dashboard or not, but that's the last thing that we encountered that we didn't have that information. But we want each one of our babies to be successful. And that's the next thing that we're going to get, I have to lean on Dr. Shaftey to find out if that's in the dashboard or not. The other thing, the other, the other concern is how many or what's the percentages of the minority students that's attending these career technical classes? As I stated earlier, we're only, we're only been working for three months. And that's the information that I'll have for our group at our next meetings. And then we can lay out a plan and see if we need any additional career technical classes to, to meet any kid that's falling through the, through the cracks. Also, I did my own personal assessments and investigation, doing some research. I compared counties. I compared our county to St. Lucie, Martin, and Brevard. And I can tell you, board members, you can be, you can rest assured on your laurels and feel good about it and state that we are second to none. So I, most of them don't have the, as many career technical classes that's offered as a little small Indian River County. So you're doing, we're doing extremely great in that area. The next one was academic success, minority students in, in honors classes. We never got that, got, got to that point yet, because we, we still struggling with the certificates, the certificates that other students have to get if they choose to go to RSC, RSC. Now, but I do, I have some, some concerns, but, but for, for our, for our committee as far as the percentage of minorities in advanced class, in advanced classes. What role do the, do the guidance councils play? Middle school guidance councils, seventh and eighth graders, when they, seventh and eighth graders, when they identify these students and place them into these advanced classes? What do the parents know about? What do the parents know about these advancement, advanced placement classes? Getting the parents on, on board, we know that's going to be a, that's a critical area. And it's extremely challenging for minority parents and students. What? What do we track? One of our, one of our bankers, one of our bankers in there wanted, wanted to know, are we tracking students from third grade to sixth grade, minority males that he would like to see get into mathematics and get jobs when they graduate? And apply for jobs in banking? And that's something that we're going to pursue as well. Now, if you all, you have any questions, you can chime in and ask me at any time. And I see if I can answer those questions, but not I got my backup over here, Ms. Shaftey. She would be able to do, she would be able to answer all the questions that I, I had, that you all have that I can't answer. And at our next meeting, as far as, as far as the communication and engagement, Ms. Stacy Clem will be here, and she will be able to chime in and do both. Because as I stated earlier, this is just a quick snapshot, a progress report of what we've done so far and where we are. And hopefully, we can get another invite, maybe in the next three months, and we'll be able to do, share some additional information with you and give you some other, some additional updates. Any question that you all might have so far? Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Yes, go ahead. So any, thank you for being here, by the way.
My pleasure.
Anything you can share on Mr. Seymour from when he was younger?
Well.
Must be very proud.
Well, I am, I am, I'm proud of his success. But I, I started early, early in education. I was, when I returned back to the district here, I started in, in Indian River County as a, as a seventh-grade teacher at the same school I graduated from, Gilbert High School. That's amazing. And it was by, generally by the name of Stuart Carlton gave me a job. And, and I was elated to come back and share and walk the grounds, matriculate the grounds where I graduated from. But I, as far as Mr. Seymour, I moved to, I became assistant coach in basketball where I coached Mr. Seymour. But I was 24 when I moved back, and I believe Mr. Seymour was 21. I, I had to get him.
In middle school?
No, but, but I coached Mr. Seymour, I, I don't know, I think he was in the 11th grade. 11th grade on the basketball team, did an outstanding job. And I believe I had Mr. Seymour by X amount of years. But, but he, I'm extremely proud of him. He's done an excellent job. Hopefully, I've been his mentor to a certain extent, and he's just a great guy.
Thank you.
And I think, I don't think Dr. Moore could have done any better.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
I appreciate that. I'm glad, I'm glad that we were able to get started on that note there. So thank you for your volunteering on the, the Climate Task Force. It's very important. I have a question about the task force members. Of the 12 members that are here, I'm not, I'm familiar with two or three people. I know that there are some community members on there, such as yourself. But I'm not sure that there are any current parents.
Yes, I, I stated earlier, that we had parents and grandparents.
Okay, are there current parents?
Uh, pardon me?
Are there current, I mean, other than Stacy Clem?
Yes, yes. And they're backbone, they, they are the backbone of our committee. Because without parents, I tell people, without parents and students, none of us would have had jobs.
Right.
Because that's the most, they're the most important ones in this community.
Yeah.
And if we don't, if we lose focus of that, well, none of us have jobs.
No, I, I agree 100%. Parental involvement is the number one.
Absolutely.
Indicator for student success, so. But the question that I have following up with that is, after listening to this, if there are any parents, maybe this is for Mr. Seymour, if there are any parents who are listening who would like to participate in the Climate Task Force, can they still do so? Can they reach out to you?
Yes, definitely. We were very careful as to the number of participants. And there are still people who are interested in, in getting involved. But we wanted a workable group, you know, if we bring in 50 people, I don't think we can get too much done quickly. But we also carefully picked the people who wanted, who volunteered to be a part of the process when we put the information out, to make sure that they had some connectivity, had some background, and are willing to work with our district as, you know, a voice for, for our community.
Thank you. So that's good to hear. So if anybody is interested, they just reach out to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you can fill them in on, so if there are any parents and you're interested, reach out to Mr. Seymour. My next question was on the two areas, the two focus areas, academic success and communication and engagement. I'm not sure if you have had a chance to visit Treasure Coast Technical College. I would recommend, my recommendation, that your next meeting be held at Treasure Coast Technical College so that the entire member team can take a tour of that school before beginning your next meeting, because Treasure Coast Technical College is amazing. And the coursework, it doesn't, it, it's obviously different than what we have offered at our, at our high schools, but it is absolutely incredible. And there are community members who don't know about it, who don't actually understand what is offered there in terms of technical vocational training. So I highly recommend that, you know, as an opportunity to, to kind of see, because that will go, fall into the, the first bullet that you shared on academic success.
Point well taken, and that's my oversight.
No, not at all.
Because we do have, at our technical school in, in this district, they offer seven different pathways to getting employed, employed. And that's medical assistance, nursing assistance, pharmacy technical, phlebotomy, practical nursing, and welding technology.
Yeah.
But as far as taking, taking a tour, I would, I would suggest that as well.
It would be wonderful.
The only thing about that one is, is it's paid. You have to pay to attend that particular, particular.
Well, there are, there's financial supports there, but I think that's a different.
That's, that's a great idea.
But it's still available, it's still something that our students, our kids, anybody from the, any adult can participate, but our students in particular can utilize Treasure Coast Technical College as a dual enrollment program, which is fabulous, because it can actually only help our students. The other thing that I was going to mention is the community and engagement portion here. Community and engagement portion, it looks like the main focus area there was mental wellness and intervention.
Yes.
But I would caution that that's not listed in our strategic plan. In our strategic plan, under communication and engagement, it is actually, it talks about establishing connections and trust among all internal, all internal and external stakeholders. It actually says that our target goals for 2025 with regard to communication and engagement is, there are three bullets, and I'll read it completely, so we're all, we all understand. Increase the number of face-to-face opportunities for community members to engage in district activities by 50%. Increase the percentage of parents accessing the Focus Parent Portal by 31% points. And increase the number of parent workshops offered by 100%. So the majority of this target here for communication and engagement should be focused on parental involvement and engagement, not mental health, mental wellness intervention. I, I'm not saying that that's not important, but that just doesn't match with our strategic plan goal under communication and engagement. The last thing I'm going to mention for communication and engagement target, in addition, reads parent, parent workshops offered, or the number of parent workshops offered, which I think I just read that. So I would, Mr., I'm looking at Dr. Moore, I should be looking at Mr. Seymour. So Mr. Seymour, just a note there that, that doesn't fall under that target area for our strategic plan. And obviously, everything that we do should be consistent with our strategic plan being the guiding force for all of our decisions that we make. So that was actually for Mr. Seymour there.
Okay.
Fully noted.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that was.
Presentation.
I would like to yield to Dr. Shaftey to elaborate on that for us.
So a little bit about how we progressed from November, December, January. The group met in November. They had two post-it notes, and we had a very open end statement. If you had, as you assess the district through your lens, whether you are a grandparent, a mother, a nonprofit agency, whatever it may be, what are your concerns? Where do you see our greatest opportunities for growth? That's where the 29 issues appeared on the post-it note. When we met with our chair, we said, we need to streamline this process, so let's begin the sorting process. Well, we tried to sort, and we had seven, then we had 17 different piles, and it still didn't make sense. So we used the framework of our strategic plan, being the five focus areas, to say, let's start there. Let's make five piles for our focus areas. And we found very clearly that the two areas that had the highest frequency of opportunities for growth fell under communication and engagement and academic success. The lens that we took, we really took an equity lens, and we said, everything fits in equity. So it would not be purposeful to streamline our conversation purely through an equity lens, because of all of the 29 issues that were raised, we found an issue, an equity access issue. And then everything, we also felt, has to have a cost associated with it, whether it be manpower, human capacity, or fiscal resources. So that eliminated that focus area as a priority, so that's how these two issues came about. The topics here, or the opportunities for growth that were streamlined, don't necessarily, or may or may not align to our action steps, whether they be offices, schools, locations, to the strategies of the strategic plan. We didn't guide the group. We tried to not necessarily overly guide this group, because it would take away the fidelity of it being a community group. So that's where the two areas came about. We support the meetings, we guide, help with planning, we help with data, but we have not dictated what their areas they wish to explore may be. And the two areas that they have selected, Mr. Thornton sits on the academic success side with minority access to advanced placement courses. And then honestly, you're the smallest subgroup. The majority of our members are sitting on the communication and engagement side. And we were just very fortunate that that's the group that really has our parents, our grandparents are in there, we have our retired educators, and they selected to assess where we are with mental health interventions and wellness, not just for students, but teachers as well. So that's where they are at this point, and how those two opportunities for growth were selected from the group, if that helps.
It, it does help, except the establishing norms and the introduction to establishing norms identifies our strategic plan as part of the discussion area, and that these areas fell within our, our strategic plan. So if we're going to use our strategic plan as we have, not guiding the discussion between the community group, it was obviously introduced, and so if it's introduced, we need to explain to our community that our strategic plan was created to guide every decision in our district. So if it does fall under communication and engagement, then whatever comes underneath that subcategory should fall within that. Just as academic success, you know, Treasure Coast Technical College and the minority students certainly fall within that. There should be an area that falls certainly within that, you know, within the communication engagement. So thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for your question. Thank you, Dr. Shaftey, for your enlightening in that area. You stated that, for clarification, you stated that all of the retired educators are on the engagement side, but I have one retired educator from Vero Beach High School. Well, I have one retired educator from Vero Beach High School that's in attendance today, Ms. Valerie Brandt. She's over there with the, uh, academic success. Um, thank you for your, yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, first off, uh, thank you, Mr. Thornton, um, thank you, Mr. Seymour, thank you, everyone who's involved. If I were not sitting on the board right now, this is the committee I'd be on. Um, and what I love about it is that what this committee, th- this to me is such a critical part of a collaboration between a district, um, and the people it serves. And one of the aspects of that is us listening. Is us listening to what the community tells us it wants us to focus on. So I appreciate you bringing that forward as issues not generated simply by the district, but actually generated by the community, community for the district to pay attention to. And if you tell us as community members that where you see we need more focus, because you're not experiencing it as community members, is in these areas of minority access to honors and, and AP classes and potentially CTE, along with an aspect of mental wellness, I want to hear that really closely, so thank you for, uh, bringing it. I'm also aware that when our strategic plan was written and presented to us, that was also pre-COVID. That was before, or in the early parts of COVID, before we were really aware of the impact that COVID and the pandemic was having on the mental wellness of our students and of our staff and of our faculty. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, because I think it's come to us in a way that we didn't anticipate when some of this work was originally done. That said, um, what I'd love to see in your next presentation, because yes, you will absolutely get an invitation back.
Thank you.
Is I appreciate that you mentioned the 29 areas, and Dr. Shafte said that those could sort of filter down into these two focal points. I would love to see what those 29 areas are. And perhaps you can just send that in an email or, or something to the board. Um, I, because I'd love to know what they are, because I think that's important information for us. And, and while they may synthesize into these two areas, for us to know what the community sees as important for us to be aware of from their perspective, I'd love to see.
Okay.
So that's one thing. Go ahead, Dr. Um, sorry. I appreciate, um, y- you also talking about the CTE. My son is actually one of the students currently dual-enrolled in the technical college.
Okay.
And so what we do have is a fantastic, um, it's actually the thing I am most happy about this year. Uh, juniors and seniors, I think it's juniors and seniors, I know it's seniors, but can dual-enroll for free to get the technical education in all the areas that you mentioned, nursing, phlebotomy, welding, et cetera? And they get it for free through our district. So while it costs for people to come in who are not our students, um, we do have, we do have some really great, um, access to that. I would, again, when you come back, one of the things I would love to see is when you talked about getting data on, um, the number of students in AP, particularly in technical education, and looking at that for the number of minority students who are having access and comparing that to other counties. What I'd also really like to see is how that compares to other groups in our county. You know, so how, if we're going to look at minority students, obviously, that has to be in comparison to something for us to understand it. And what I am aware has happened often in the past, and I don't know if it's still happening, which is why this would be important information. Um, and as a parent of a, of a son who's going the, the technical education direction, um, I think about this stuff a lot. What I, what I want to be aware of, and, and what I want us to know as a district, is to make sure that certain kids are not being tracked into technical education, because they're perceived not to have the academic skills to succeed academically in a college track. So I want us to be really sensitive to that, because sometimes kids may be advised into one track or another, because they're not perceived to have the skills, um, to succeed as well academically. And I'd like to kind of look at, at, to see how we can dig into that as a breakdown. And I want to make sure that that's not particularly happening to minority kids as an access, as a equity issue. And I know that's a big, that's a big question, and so, um, I'm hoping that you guys kind of got what I meant by that. Because I want to understand where all our kids are, and to make sure that our kids are where they want to be, and that they're getting the supports to be where they want to be, not where somebody is just tracking them into. Does that make sense?
I agree, it does. And, uh, that's, that's, oh, oh, along the same lines that our committee, we were talking about. Those other students that, that we might lose, how, how are we going to find that data? I don't know whether it's on the dashboard or not, but I don't know whether it's permissible or not for us to do a survey of all those students that's in these particular, uh, career track areas, and get their, get some feedback from those students. And the, and, uh, question that, that's not limited to, how, how do you, how did, how did you get into this particular program? Uh, and we did find out there are three pathways in this district to graduate. So how did they get into those pathways? Were they counseled to get in there? And were they interested? Uh, so, was it a caveat, a carrot that, that led you to get into this particular program? Or, or whatever. But we, 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 we will come back with that information in about three months. We'll, we'll have a, a, a better, better grip on what we are doing. And right now, we're still in uncharted waters, but we do see things through a different lens. And that's one reason, we don't even meet on these grounds. We meet elsewhere. So they can be, they could have the liberty to talk about anything they want to talk about. Not, and not saying that we got a superintendent might walk in on us, or something of this nature. So they are free to talk in any way they deem necessary as long as engaging students, involving students. Um, but we, point we are taking, we do, we appreciate you that. I made some notes on that, and I'll break, take it to our, our committee at the next meeting. As I stated, we only have two hours in our meeting. And we haven't, we haven't had enough time yet, we only have six hours together, to come up with all of these, this data. But, um, it, it, maybe April, May, you all have given us invite, we're going to accept it. And when we return, we will have more information to give you, we'll have an action plan. Who, what, when, and where, and where we going? And, um, and maybe, uh, and I'm a stickler for not, for not, um, doing a lot of talking and wasting your time, because I do know a lot of time creates boredom. And we don't want to bore you with anything. So we're going to accept that invitation. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. I had the honor of working with your wife at Gifford Middle, absolutely wonderful, and your daughter was a student. And I also had the honor of recommending Mr. Thornton for the FHSAA Board, and you were certainly a student advocate, and you still do that today, so thank you. Um, Mr. Seymour, thank you for doing this. I know when your department opened, this is one of your focal points, and, uh, I appreciate you getting us to this point, and especially with this wonderful committee. Uh, the academic success, obviously, very, very important. The community engagement, I disagree. I think the mental wellness intervention is key, because one of the Florida School Board Association platform is mental health issues negatively impacts student achievement. So that's something this committee, you know, really, really wanted to look at. And as Dr. Schiff said, uh, strategic plan was created before COVID, so a lot of other things are happening now. And I think it would be a really bad day when we tell a community, uh, engagement committee, saying, no, you can't do that, you have to do this. You come to us, you share with us, you tell us the perspective of the, of the community on what we need to hear. I think that's very, very important. Mr. Thornton, as a former middle and high school principal, um, when you talked about the minority students in honors and advanced placement coursework, that's crucial. And as a middle school principal, we would get a list of who should be in the honors classes. So it starts elementary, then you go from there, and then placing those students, as a middle school principal, you would say, okay, I think this student could do it, I think we need to move this student. So it takes a lot of interaction, but that starts in elementary, so we really, really have to take a look at that. Can they get it into middle school if they don't have the advanced math? Are they going to be in the math curriculum you want them to be in in high school? So I think that's a really, really good focal, focal point that we look at. Um, when you brought up the CTE classes and how many we have at the high schools, and I think we, I think we really have a, a, a really good representation there. And Dr. Moore, something that I know we will continue to look at with our five-year capital plan, where are we going? Where are we going with our high schools? Where are we going with our middle schools? What does it look like for some schools with attendance and population and so forth? So I want to continue to look at that, especially in regards to our CTE, and what our high schools will look at, and what we have in the future, so I think that's important. But, um, Mr. Thornton, Ms. Clem, all the members of the committee, I just want to thank you for what you are doing. These, um, are the type of things we need to look at. I think it was important when Dr. Moore created this, um, department with, uh, Mr. Seymour and his team, and Dr. Shafte, and everyone else, Dr. Colly with parent engagement. A lot of us were in on those parent meetings last week, um, by Zoom. But, uh, this is important, because we must listen to everyone in our community on what we need to do better. Mrs. Thornton talked about Ms. Brandt Wilson, and I had the pleasure of working with her as a teacher, a junior high and a counselor, and you talk about a student advocate, and what she would do as far as helping each student be successful. And so we, Mr. Seymour, I don't know who chose this committee, but you did a great job with representation in our community. And I think this is the impact that will have when Mr. Thornton comes back and Ms. Clem comes back the next time, on where we're going to go with this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, um, to the chair. Yeah, it, it was, Doc, it was very, um, important that we chose individuals that understand the difficulties of our district and what our superintendent is held accountable for, and actually have background in how they've dealt with certain situations based on their functionality, their departments, and their community worth. So, uh, each individual came in with the background and with some knowledge. And where one, I think, um, the main thing about them, they were very, very concerned about how we can move this district forward as a unit.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Rosario, you had another question?
I, I did. I just wanted to clarify something. I, with regard to the mental wellness, I never said that it wasn't key, I just wanted to be clear on that. Uh, the mental wellness intervention, um, I never said that it wasn't key. What I said was, it didn't fall within that category or that area of our strategic plan. Um, also, this area with regard to the strategic plan, as it states there, is the prioritization, prioritization, prioritization of focus area based on the district strategic plan. So if this indeed is exactly the prioritization of the district strategic plan, that area of mental wellness intervention doesn't fall under communication and engagement. And this clearly, irregardless of, um, COVID, was just given to the, the committee. So it, it is, you all did the right thing by giving our current strategic plan to the community members to review it and align their issues or their concerns or the 29 items, and streamline it to our strategic plan. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I also wanted to follow up on something that Dr. Schiff mentioned with regard to some students who don't fall within the, um, area of, um, wanting or needing technical. Uh, some, would it, something that you said.
Students may be tracked into a particular area, because they're perceived that that's where they're best suited, that may or may not be what they feel themselves to be best suited.
Okay. Got it. Um, that's what I was thinking. Um, when I, just wanted to throw this in there. When I, years ago, I was an assistant principal at an alternative school in high, in, um, in Brooklyn. Um, but it was true, I've shared this with, um, Dr. Moore. It is, it was truly an alternative school. It wasn't a placement for students who had discipline issues. Um, the alternative was for students who were overaged and undercredited. So in New York at the time, you could be, you can be in school technically up until the age of 21, even though you age out of your current local high school at 18. So if after 18, between 18 and 21, you age out, you can still enroll in the alternative school, if you're undercredited, to receive an accelerated program or an accelerated education, um, that is geared, you know, specifically towards you, and then allow these children to actually graduate. Um, some of these kids had very difficult lives, which brought them to this point. Um, others chose to be there, because the larger schools just weren't, they just couldn't function in the larger school. So they just wanted a smaller program. But it really was a true alternative. Um, and I have talked about this many times, and I think that that's something that we ought to consider at some point. What would that look like for us? Because we have two high schools that are, have a lot of kids, a lot. We don't really have an alternative here, a true alternative. We do not have, um, you know, a place for where students who don't fit in the larger schools, who, other than, you know, we have charter, but who don't fit in the larger schools, or who don't feel successful in the larger schools, and who do not want to go into a, a, a technical program or a vocational program. And so, you know, there is a possibility that you might have a group of students who might opt or who might choose to be in a true alternative, um, and, and find success there. It would be a smaller school. Um, it, it certainly is something for us to consider at some point, or really at least engage in the conversation. Um, it would release, you know, maybe some, I mean, lessen probably some discipline issues that might be happening because of academic, um, frustrations at the larger schools. I mean, there's so many things that could be taken into consideration, but I thought about that with your comment, and then I think you mentioned a comment as well, um, and I just wanted to add that in there. My last thought, I'm going to come back to this mental wellness, is I don't want anyone to forget that there is a Parents' Bill of Rights, which gives parents the fundamental, um, right to make decisions with regard to their children's mental health and wellness. Um, so whatever the discussions Dr. Shafte and, and Mr. Seymour happen, um, at, at, at these climate, you know, meetings, um, we should always keep in mind that it is the parent's right to make the fundamental decisions with regard to mental wellness.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, uh, just to piggyback on what you were saying, as far as the true alternative.
Yeah.
We don't have that here in this district.
Right.
Uh, I would like to see, in some point, we, uh, entertain that, uh, as far as developing a true alternative program, because that's what I'm, 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 that's my.
Your passion.
My passion, and what I, the, it, the thing that I, that I, that I, that I was involved with over the years. And, uh, because all students, when you get in alternative education, it shouldn't be just punitive. It should be something that kids really want to get into. And, um, and when you get in alternative education, all kids that go there, you can't give all kids the same prescription. They have to have a different prescription. So that's where you have to look in, into those type things. Many of our alternative programs, and they get kids back on track or stay there. We even developed, uh, uh, individual academic plans to move those kids forward. Now, don't get that mixed up with, uh, IEP, because you can get yourself in trouble when you're dealing with, with federal dollars. But it's IAP, uh, individual academic plans to move kids forward, and on a different track, educational track. And, uh, and you mentioned, uh, those, those kids that's in those alternative programs up to 21 years of age, I think that's a mandate through the state. I know ESE students can stay in at 21 or 22 years old, but I don't know about the other students. But, uh, but if you requested it and mandated it through the, through the state, and, uh, but I don't know, Dr. Um, Dr. Moore, whether those students still have to stay on the same academic track as far as getting the same math, full math, full English, and those type things, uh, so be it. But at the same time, we can get that, but you can, you might be able to eliminate other things, and I appreciate that. Uh, I, I visited one of the, one of the best alternative education sites, and I think in the state of Florida, that's over there in Tampa. What they, what they instill was kids coming to school a half day, getting all of the core classes. And in the afternoon, kids who wanted to get into masonry, carpentry, electronics, uh, welding, whatever, then at 12 o'clock or 1:00, they went to work. They went to work, and the best caveat was, they got paid. And the school district paid for those individuals' work to's. And the school district paid for those individuals' work tos. And so when they graduated and left the district, they became their work tos to go out into the job market. So that was just one of the caveats that I looked at in one of the programs I thought was extremely well put together in Hillsborough County. I don't know whether we can duplicate that or not because of college dollars. But I would like to see some other type of program in this district, and I'll share that with the, I'm quite sure our academic success committee will be bringing some of that to you all to see what would be the possibilities of going down that avenue. So point well taken, point well taken, and we really appreciate it. You all giving us more, you all need to come to our meetings.
I intend to, thank you.
You have an invite.
On times I couldn't come, but I would really like to.
You have an invite.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I wanted to tell, hold on. I wanted to tell you, Doc, that my wife still think that you're the best middle school teacher she ever had. Principal, that is. So kudos to you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Brandon Board.
Yes. Mr. Thornton, thank you for being here. I've known your name for a long time when I was a teacher here in this district and administrator. So you come with a wealth of background knowledge, as far as I'm concerned, that you have to bring to the district. So we appreciate that. And it's nice to see Ms. Brandt Wilson back there. Good to see you. It's interesting, one thing that is kind of coming to my mind is Career Source. Have you had them in or talked to them or been part of them with this conversation?
Not yet.
Because Career Source, I was kind of opened up to that when I was wondering why we're taking away the carpentry department. You know, when we're building so many homes, why aren't we teaching kids, you know, carpentry skills here that want to learn them? And I was concerned, why are we taking that away? And that happened a couple of years ago. I don't know if you remember that first year on the board. And we were told through all the data, through Career Source, that that wasn't the way to go. And that's why we went that direction. Now, I'm not sure, that was before all this bubble of building happened. So I'm not sure if they were correct in their prediction or not. But that's why I wanted to know whether or not you're including Career Source in some of these conversations.
To the chair, as Mr. Thornton mentioned, we were just getting started. But as you bring up, and we invite you all, things that we need to research and giving us ideas, we definitely will pursue them.
Okay. Just because they're a really good source to give you some data and background information. They do studies of the area of what's needed for manufacturing and what the job growth areas are in the area. So if a kid wants to stay here in Annapolis County, what do they need to do in order to get employed? So they're a really good source to maybe listen to or invite to one of your meetings. The other thing I was going to tell you is I'm anxious to have the superintendent be able to talk about the five-year plan because what you're talking about, I think, is really great because it's kind of with his vision of what we're looking at in five years of what we got to do to make the changes needed for student needs versus always have the same old, same old for kids. You know, we got to look at what are student needs and what can we do as a district to change things up to meet student needs? And not the needs now, but their needs for their future. Because we don't know what's going to happen in their future, but we got to try to help them predict it. And so I look forward to that. When is that presentation going to be, Dr. Moore? Oh, you pushed it back to March now. Okay. So I think, you know, part of that is he's taking all this into, what you said is kind of where we've had conversation about too, these technical schools and what we need to do to supply kids with more than that. Because my dad was one of those kids, Dr. Schiff. He was one of those kids that was told in sixth grade that he needed to be a mechanic. And thank God he didn't listen. And not that a mechanic isn't a good career, but he didn't want to do mechanics. And thank God he didn't listen to that person that told him to do something that he didn't want to do. He pursued college and wound up graduating and getting, you know, a doctorate, actually. So I think sometimes kids can be pigeonholed, and we really got to start listening to them. So I think it's great that we have some of these sources that kids can access now and they can see what they like to do and enjoy doing and maybe pursue those because they don't know what they want to do yet, a lot of them. And some of us know what we want to do, and then we go to school and we figure out that's not what we wanted to do. So I think we need to really listen more. And as a board, you know, we do, that's our job, is we need to listen to what you guys are suggesting, what the community is saying, what the kids need. So we appreciate that.
We appreciate you all having us. And at the very next meeting, like I stated, we'll have more information that we can share with you. We'll have a better idea of the path that we focus on. And next time it would not be just a progress report, we'll give you a report card to look at maybe in the next three months. And you can give, we assess that at that particular time. But what's next for us? Access current reality to establish baseline data for priority areas. And number two, to assume a solution-driven lens through recommendation to positively impact focus areas. And I want to sum that up by saying, at the next meeting, we do appreciate you all giving us invite, putting on your listening ears for us. And we have more direction of where we want to go and where we headed. We'll have, like I said, we'll have an action plan for you that you can look at, who, what, when and where, and how are we going to get there. And I want to conclude the meeting by this statement that Stacy gave me last night. And it's right to the point about our committee. And it states, we are a community group, not a district group. We are looking at things from a different lens and have the independence we need to ensure our focus areas are truly representative of our community. We take our responsibility seriously and consider ourselves a team for the children, students and the school district. And I want to conclude with that statement. Any other questions at all? Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at you, you get applause from your mentee over here. Just thank you for being critical and stepping up when Eric Volin told you to be in charge of the committee. And I think from a systems perspective, when you step back and you look at an organization as a whole and you're looking for key indicators of success, creating this balance between the community and the school districts itself and listening, being willing to receive the information, willing to have an exchange of information can only make a community better. So seeing this come to life, I know you said a number of times you've only met three times, but look at what you've been able to create over the course of those three meetings. So very much looking forward to continuing a critical conversation around the reality of our district and then engaging in a solutions-focused approach on how to ultimately make this that district that everyone else is looking to, to figure out how to get the job done correctly. So outstanding, outstanding beginning. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate you. And then our final item of the day is just a very brief update on our strategic plan, African-American Achievement Plan, Superintendent's Evaluation System, as they all tie together. And as we talk through the presentations today, that just scared me a little bit. We're really excited about the kind of conversation and the depth in which we've been able to have these conversations. So, you know, ultimately, when you look at our district strategic plan, we believe we're still on target to achieve, maintain or improve over 90% of all of the targets that we've set for ourselves. That's what we did last year. That's what we anticipate doing this year. Even in the midst of a ever-changing, spiking, here and there pandemic. So as you know, where we currently are within our school system is yet another spike. We came back in January, and we ultimately have deployed between 50 and 70 staff members on a daily basis to make sure that we had classrooms covered, to ensure that we had a continuum of instruction. So from a district perspective, we use this all-hands-on-deck approach to make sure, we want to keep schools flowing. We want to keep kids in their same classrooms. We don't want to be combining classrooms. And we don't want principals and other teachers in our schools to be stressed as a result of not having folks available to them. And what has been encouraging to me, once again, another sign of the health of the organization is the willingness of district staff to step up and step into a classroom. And even though they had the opportunity to, you know, work the schedule at a school site, which, you know, gets them out and home much earlier from working in the district office, but you always see them just straggling back in here even though they don't have to. So just the level of commitment of our staff as we've managed through this has really been very, very encouraging to me. But what I'll do is just share some very, very quick highlights regarding, love this picture, probably because I'm so far away in it. Just want to share some quick quarter updates and look at our strategic plans, things within each specific areas that we've been able to continue to improve upon or implement. Our literacy leaders, microcounseling is our focus of ensuring that we have world-class educational leaders and those who support. So even though we have this all-hands-on-deck approach over the course of this last year, we have not taken our eyes off building the human capital in which they are, you know, individuals that every single school system should want to steal. Not that I would ever want them to do that, but we are creating real-life instructional leaders who can lead this work. I think some of the work that Ms. Dan Pierre and Rachel Moore have done at ESE is absolutely outstanding. We have an ESE support group, and one of their issues was continuum of services. And it came, very, very natural conversation about not having a true continuum of services, continuing to peel back the onion to make improvements in that specific area. One of the things, this is also under, this is actually everyone's responsibility. If you look at our website, we've upgraded the parent handbooks. Sorry, sorry, I was concerned. You know, if you look at the manuals that we have, very, very sharp, clean and precise. We continue to conduct audits to ensure administrators have the culturally components of interviewing courses. That's one of the things that we began last year. We're very proud about the increase of hiring over the course of the last two years, and we continue to look at that. Mr. Fagan, knee-deep in always evaluating our SAM model, looking at class size, making shifts. You know, we are a school system that's made all the easy cuts. There are no more easy cuts to make in our organization. We're pretty much a budget that funds salary. So really continuing to look at how we fund some of this really innovative stuff that we want to do, continuing to do a regression study on how we're looking at funding positions. When you look at our African-American Achievement Plan, one of our initiatives was the AIM program, really intentional look at our sixth and ninth graders, providing that additional support as they transition into those high need grade levels as well as ongoing support when students return from the alternative school. We've also continued, as we highlighted last board workshop, with our dashboards, really continuing to make data our superpower. A lot of things that we spoke about today, whether it be differentiated instruction, whether it be planning or, you know, common planning, all of those conversations are empowered by the ability to interpret data and have a deep understanding of the impact of instruction or whatever your intentions may be. One of the things that we're really proud of is that we've turned those public, those dashboards on to the public so everyone can see them. I won't go over the Climate Task Force as we made this program, really having the opportunity to receive that information that Mr. Thornton really makes us better. When you look at our recruitment, we continue to go out there. We have been out recruiting tremendously. HBCUs continue to do those recruitment fairs. We have one coming up later next month, actually, in Miami. So we're looking forward to bringing a few people up here from Miami. And then continuing to look at the impacts of school choice. This district made a bold choice a few years back to create school choice. So as we look at school choice, we think there's additional opportunities for us to continue to problem solve, to say, how do we have a better return on investment? I think a lot of that goes back to what Ms. Baranborg just kind of teased up for me. So I'll tease it just a little bit more. Looking at the grade configurations, how we're grouping students, and thinking a little bit differently in order to ensure that we are, in fact, a world-class educational system that doesn't have three traditional outdated approaches that are not meeting the needs of all kids. And as I kind of reflect back and I look at the last couple of meetings, I continue to be encouraged that now the time is right. Just some progress snapshots in terms of some data. When you're looking at out-of-school suspensions, we're well within our mark to hit our target. We actually problem solve deeper beyond just classroom suspensions, and we're looking at removals and really digging into, are students being removed from classroom that is appropriate for all kids? So it's not really an issue of out-of-school suspensions. We've been able to really put that in a place in which we feel comfortable. But then digging into, are we really keeping kids in classrooms, engaged and connected to instruction over the course of a school year and just not giving them a timeout or a pause? When you look at retention, we continue to hit those marks with no problem. And as you will prove tonight, our out-of-field waivers, you continue to see a steady decrease. That's 6% right now. That's going to exceed where we want to be at the end of the year. So continuing to make our progress there. Looking at our graduation rates, when you look at the gap between white and African-American students, as you can see here, tremendous progress. We have no issues with hitting that mark. When you look African-American, white gap and one more out-of-school suspensions, you're seeing first quarter was .83, 1.3. It's very similar to where we were at this particular point. What we learned as students transitioned back into school over the course of this year, those who missed the most instruction or were not in school had the hardest time transitioning back in, specifically not in our elementary schools, but in our secondary schools. So transitioning back into elementary, those students actually had an easier time than our older students. And then there's that risk ratio that I was just referring to regarding classroom removals. Once again, you know, opportunities to improve there, but that's kind of where we were last year and thinking we're going to see a steady decline in that based on things that we now have in place. And then when you look at our fall diagnostic and I-ready achievement, percentage of students above grade level, the gap in ELA. And what's interesting here is last year, you see a very similar, when you look at the winter diagnostic, both 22 points. But it was a unsupervised way of taking assessments for I-ready last year because so many students were home. So we thought it was inflated. So when you see a similar end count or the equivalent end count, you would think, oh, my gosh, we're still the same. But the reality is, based on now we're in a controlled environment, taking those assessments, we're actually very, very encouraged in both those particular points. So when you look forward, there's still a lot of work to be done, and make no mistakes about it, when you look at the health of the organization, where we are, we're in a solid place, but in no way are we comfortable with where we are. And as I listen through some of the questions board members asked to some of our presenters, continue to be encouraged by their responses as well as the depth in which they're willing to ask. They provide those responses. I can tell you from my perspective as superintendent, this isn't a guy who just sits at this office and asks how schools are going, live, eat, breathe and drink in classrooms. When you talk about differentiated instruction, that's all we talk about. You talk about seeing things in practice in terms of ELL because we don't just talk about it, we go and we look for it. Some of the things that we're doing now as we go from quarter two to quarter three is really, you know, we had our DataCom process week before last, which was the opportunity for every principal to come in, have a conversation about how they have disaggregated the data, the action that they're going to take. And then my team, you know, we meet every Friday saying, who was in what schools? What did you see? How did it go? Where do we need to be next week? So a very focused conversation. We're not hoping for an outcome. We expect an outcome, and we know exactly where to support and shift support over the course of time in order to ensure that we've hit that particular outcome we have, we've had for ourselves. We think in the next two weeks, we should have a very, very smooth schooling experience. And when I say smooth, we think we'll be in a much better place with the volume of students and faculty and staff who are absent. I can tell you in just, you know, meeting with principals, their opportunity to regroup students, provide real quality interventions to the right students is extremely encouraging. Sometimes I grow frustrated as I listen because I am in the Sometimes I grow frustrated as I listen because I am in the schools and I'm listening to principals talk through their data at a depth in which I haven't heard those individuals talking. It's very, very impressive to see their focus, their ability to understand what they need to do in order to know, to get where they think or they know they're going to be at the end of the school year. So very quick updates, but just want to give levels of insurances. This cabinet is working extremely, extremely hard to provide the support to schools so we can hit the outcomes. And, you know, you see the last plan here is the master planning process, great deal of work taking place there and looking at how we are providing quality education to all students. This is just more things that we've done within the community, specifically to me. A lot of work of shifting and changing the organization's perception amongst our community. So we've been very, very intentional over the course of time. When you look at the school district or the school system, you want people in the community to say, that is a place that has its act together. They're doing a very, very solid job. Doing some of the work with the Learning Alliance is a strategy, really continuing to listen to our students. We fill this room every other month with students in our secondary schools and just talk through what is and isn't working, very similar to what Mr. Thornton did just with adults. I do the same thing with students in terms of what do you guys need from us? Getting out in the district, the state of the district was a strategy really to ensure our community knows the level and the depth in which we're planning and to hit the outcomes that we want for ourselves. Celebrating staff, it has been a very, very hard two years on teachers. The retention of teachers, although we celebrate our retention rate, we have to do everything in our power to make sure that we're retaining teachers and they're not leaving a very, very hard and complex position. So taking the opportunity to celebrate them is something that we will now need to continue to do. And then continuing to look at what we're doing with the Graves' property. Mr. Barefoot's not here, but over the last two weeks, we've done two presentations around the state of the district as well as the intentions of the grave property. Very well received. Ms. Emerson is doing some outstanding work, really building community, understanding that this is a space we want to give back to our community and really be in service of our community and the creation of that. So we're very excited to bring information back to our board in that specific area. So with that, that is our update. Be happy to answer any questions the board members may have.
Board members? Oh, you do? Dr. Jones?
Dr. Moore, on the opportunities for growth, implementing a district-supported coverage plan for high staff absences due to COVID-19. I talked with Ms. Oak this morning and how many subs are out and how many we had to send out from the district, but what do you think that's going to look like? And do we go to the route where, okay, you have 100% attendance, you get this? I mean, what are we looking at that? Because we're sending a lot of district staff out and principals are looking to cover every day.
So we are on a countdown. So just as we are sitting here, the, we're on the backside of the spike based on the county-wide information. And make no mistakes about it, the, every single person at this district has a crucial job, regardless of what that job title is. If it wasn't, we already would have eliminated that particular job. We need it. I think staff understands where we are right now, but we will begin to slowly pull back that particular support as we move forward. So, you know, once that spike is not there, the plans that we have in place did work from October, November, December, which is when you would exceed, which was rare, the substitutes that are available, the onsite support that can be used for substitutes, and then when you can't do that, then you would call Mr. Bass and he'd be able to provide that support. We just didn't want to take that extra time. So we're hoping to be back there in two or three weeks and use that plan as the rest of the school year.
And I just want to say a special thank you to district support staff, administrators, teachers, everyone who comes every day. I know they're saying this year is probably the toughest one they've had in a couple of years, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Have a question? Okay.
Yeah, I had a question, but it got answered in the course of the presentation. I want to echo, though, what Dr. Jones said and what Dr. Moore said. You know, everybody's already got a job, and in the last couple of weeks, couple of months, they're having to go out and also do somebody else's job who's out, and that puts an incredible burden, not a burden, it puts a, it puts a strain and a stress on everybody who is now covering their own job where they have obligations and deadlines and responsibilities, and they're covering somebody else's job because schools need to stay open. So I want to acknowledge the gratitude for that and respect for that and the plan we have in place to make sure schools are up and open and staying covered. It takes a lot of work to do that. So thank you for that. Coming back to also this notion of mental wellness, take care of yourselves. You know, everybody who is now doing two and three jobs, that puts a strain on you, and it puts a strain on your mental, physical, emotional well-being. And we need structures and supports for that as much as we need for our students and our teachers in schools. But it is now, I think, more important than it's ever been, as everybody is more stressed than they have ever been. So thank you for the job you're doing, and thank you for taking care of everybody else, and don't forget yourselves in the process.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rosario?
Thank you. I wanted to, you made a, you shared some information here with regard to the out-of-school suspensions and how those have significantly been reduced, and they truly have significantly reduced. And then I think you made a comment also about students being sent out of the classroom, receiving a suspension, but then needing to go back into the classroom. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to share what I've heard from many teachers. I'm going to do the negative part, not the good part. Kids go back in, behavior is addressed, there's no more misbehavior happening. On the flip side of it, I just want to be sure that teachers feel respected and that they feel supported. So there are many teachers who may send a student out because of misbehavior, something truly egregious, or something that deserves being sent out, or a student who is consistently misbehaving in the classroom and that a particular behavior is just not rectifying somehow or another, that that student or those students in that particular situation is not being sent a, you know, don't do this again, and then being sent back to the classroom. That's when we lose the morale. That's when we lose the trust with our teachers and our instructional staff where they don't feel supported and they don't feel respected. And of course, students lose respect for the teachers at that point because they say, you know, you all know, they say, well, you know, I just got away with it. So the, I think there's a fine line there, and I just want to give you an opportunity to address that area so that anyone who is watching or listening understands that our intent is never for that to occur. I'm assuming that that is our intent.
No, absolutely not. So when you look at the number of suspensions, 1,400 suspensions, it was very clear, the problem-solving of connecting a consequence or a opportunity to modify a behavior wasn't being done with consistency. That's an administrator problem. Like, I kicked out of class, I suspend you, you go home. We were able to fix that. We're at the point where we are saying, what is the appropriate response to that behavior and making sure that behavior or that consequence or behavior modification program does, in fact, alleviate or eliminate the behavior in the classroom and being consistent in making sure that that is, in fact, the case. The biggest struggle we have is not in-classroom behavior, it's out-of-classroom behavior, which is significantly different than the teacher being there, knowing the kid versus someone I don't know at all. So it's really for us, continuing to improve the access. Now, opportunities to improve would be really looking at, when you do something that's egregious, there's a very specific consequence that goes to an egregious behavior, not a continuous, I give you a warning because you did something egregious even though it happened in a classroom. Absolutely not. So I think those are the opportunities. One of the things that we're doing now is really looking at, very similar to what we did with the community. I don't like problems. They make me, they get me mad. People just really don't want me mad. But I know if we don't do everything on the front end, we're going to have problems. That's just systems change. So one of the things Mr. Bass is doing with a team which includes the union is let's go school-to-school. Let's look at exactly what you just said, because in some cases, it works really, really, really well. In other cases, you have that frustration. But let's really, really understand it, let's evaluate it, and then let's make the appropriate shift or modification, which may be on my side, maybe on teacher's side, maybe on administrator's side, but you just don't overreact and really engaging in the dialogue. I think it's one of the things that I'm most thankful for about the pandemic. I think, as weird as that sounds, the opportunity really to engage and create a relationship with unions because, you know, you had no choice. We have to figure this out together, and when we were wrong, and we were wrong a lot, we switched it, we modified it, we changed it, and we did it together. So that same philosophy as we're doing something. I mean, look, we're going from an eight-hour day for teachers next year to a seven-and-a-half-hour day next year. If you don't think, you think that's easy, right? Oh, just go home a half hour early. There's duties, there's schedules, there's pickup times. That's 22 planning. There's all kinds of things that we have to do, and that's why we're doing that work right now with a team which includes the union to say, and don't get me wrong, absolute right thing to do, send those teachers home to their families, because schools are drastically in better places than we were two years ago. That only works seven hours and 20 minutes. So there's, we know it can be done. We know it can be done. We've just got to figure out how to operationalize it, and that takes time. And I know that we'll have that success because this team's never going to put their head in the sand and say, well, it is what it is. So, you know, absolutely. As we are, we are in a place right now doing things just like that. So at the end of this school year or the opening of next school year, we think we're going to be in a really, really solid place based on everything we are willing to learn in real time to respond to this school year.
Yeah, it's good to hear. And, you know, on the flip side of it, you have the infractions that are very minor, but the teacher absolutely cannot teach everybody in the classroom with that one consistent misbehavior, and so they're just needing, you know, you need to step out for a little bit until I can have time to call home. You know, oftentimes, right after lunch, they're back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back with classes. There's no time to call home.
Yeah.
So they just need to feel, you know, supported in that, you know, this student had to be set out, but hey, I'm going to, I'm going to follow up on this.
Yeah.
You know, and oftentimes, that kid is like, oh, that's what you did? You know, go back to the classroom. And that's where everything just falls apart. So I'm glad that you addressed that.
We got it.
Something else that you just mentioned as well with regard to these walkthroughs that are happening, I think that it's very important that everybody be on the same page with regard to what we're seeing and what we're not seeing. But I also don't want, I'm hoping that there won't be like a dog and pony show. I'm hoping that you'll legitimately see if there are, you know, things that are occurring or not.
I go, no one knows I'm coming, and no one walks, I walk anywhere I want with my own key. Ain't no one, ain't no one going to give me a dog and pony show. That does not happen.
No, I, I just.
Does not happen.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, want, I would love to hear what the feedback would be at the tail end of it, of what, you know, the observations were because, and obviously, I'm sure that we will. The next thing I wanted to follow up on was what is a question with regard to substitutes. What is the, do substitutes need, substitutes do not need a teacher certification, do they?
They do not need a teacher certification, but there's a requirement for the job description, which generically is the associate of arts or 60 college credits, plus whatever training that might be there.
So at a minimum, you need an associate's degree?
Generically, yes.
Generically?
I don't think it's, you don't, you don't have to have the actual degree. You may have 60 hours, which would do it. So there's two different things, yeah.
So those people that are being sent into the classrooms all have to, are we ensuring that anybody from the district level has at a minimum an associate's degree?
What we did going into it, we put together a course and really went through what those requirements would be, what you would do. So above and beyond just that, there was opportunities really, we didn't send anybody in cold, there was a course that they took. So we knew this was going to happen. We knew this, we knew three months ago. You said it was going to happen in January. So in preparation, there's been a great deal of training and prep, and it's been.
You mean, you listened to me?
Mark the date and time.
No, no, I just want to make sure that most people who, at a minimum, would have the same, I'm assuming that what I'm hearing is that at a minimum would have the same qualifications as your typical substitute teacher.
I would say in 95% of cases, that is accurate, but we are in a state of emergency. So I don't want to mislead anybody. Everyone's had the training.
Well, not technically.
What? Well, okay, you know what I'm talking about, yes, not technically.
Well, just don't say that, because then people will think that we really are in a state of emergency.
Got it.
But I understand.
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's gone down and in the trenches and done the work, but I also think it's an important thing for everybody to do once in a while. And I have done it as a district person, returned to teaching. As a matter of fact, that's what made me want to go back to teaching at the end, because you, first of all, you forget and you miss it when you're an administrator a little bit. And the other thing is, you learn a lot about how it's changed, and I think it's important that people actually got to go in there and see what it's like right now, and especially during a pandemic. So I think it probably opens minds up, too.
New found appreciation for teachers.
Yeah. New appreciation, I mean, I even quizzed Mr. Bass back there about how his day went in first grade, and I'm sure he learned a lot about, you know, appreciating teachers and all they go through and to maintain a classroom, so we appreciate that. Before we close, Mrs. Rosario brought up two bills that are moving, and I wanted to address them because I did look them up. Those are the parental rights bills, and they came up rather quickly. So in the House, the one that is, the House version came up on January 11th, and it's already laid on the table. That means it's going to be voted on on the House side. So the one that got introduced on the 18th in the Senate has already just in two committees, so it's not moving as fast. And they typically don't in the Senate because they've got a lot more bills and a lot less senators. So Senate bills usually take a little bit longer to run through. But yes, those are two parental rights bills that have a lot to do with looking at the parental rights bill that we already passed last, that was passed last year, that is being tweaked a little bit as far as parents' rights with certain things that are coming across, and we'll change some of the stuff, I think, that we're looking at in our school district, so we need to look at those.
Would you send that information to us? Because you're referring to bills, but we don't have like numbers or links or stuff, would be very helpful.
Sure. HB 1557 and Senate Bill 1834. And I can, you know, send you the bill itself if you'd like.
I can send it. I'll send it to Nancy and Sharon, because I have it right here.
Go ahead and do that. All right. And with that, unless anybody has anything else, we're going to close this media at 3:28. Thank you all.
Thank you.